Good morning. Welcome to Delaware County Council Meeting, January 25th, 2022, here in the Delaware County Commissioners' courtroom. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everybody would please stand and remove your hats, if you have your hats on, and let's see. Don, you can assert the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, just a reminder, any questions from the public can be directed to the County Council website, countycouncildist@co.dellaware.in.us. Also, you can contact your council people at any time through the month, not just at the County Council meeting. Our information, web addresses, telephone numbers are on the website, and we will have, at the end of the meeting, we will have public comment as well, and I'll go over just some things about public comment there, about keeping it to three minutes and that kind of thing when we get there. All right, Denise, was the agenda posted?
Yes.
All the advertisements made?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I need an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Lassiter.
I have a question. It should be as corrected because the date was changed and the word hiring freeze should be spelled out, F-R-E-E-Z-E.
I'll update my motion as amended.
Okay.
And I will withdraw my second.
Well, and why don't we go ahead and, for some reason, the public comment isn't down here at the bottom, so let's go ahead and add that as well.
Yeah, also.
If we can, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please, Steve.
Can we call the roll first?
Yeah, let's do that, too. This is for attendance.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Is this attendance or the...
This is for attendance.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Quakenbush.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Now, if you'll go ahead and do for the approval of the agenda.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Yes, it was, Jenny.
Yeah, because I withdrew.
Of course, you did.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion from Piper, second from Webb.
Sir.
Now, roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, I need an approval of the December 14th and the January 6th special meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush.
Yes.
Any discussion, corrections, questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
I abstain for January the 6th.
Mr. Alexander.
All right, the next up on the, or next item on the agenda is the tabled ARP business from last month. There was appropriation for 1.6 million out of the ARP fund. We would need to remove that from the table.
Correct.
I motion to move that off the table.
Got a motion from Piper.
Second.
Second from...
Ballard.
Ballard, okay. Ooh, it came from that direction. Okay, and our motion here, just for everybody's, is to remove it from the table, so we'll take a vote on removing it from the table, correct, Bill?
Correct.
Okay, and then we'll have to, that's already been...
Been discussed.
And then discussion, right, okay. So I need a roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Okay, discussion on the ARP. I know everybody's had a chance to get questions answered since the special meeting from January 6th. John, Shannon, you guys have anything you want to add?
I don't, I don't have anything, Dad.
Okay.
We provided all the information, we've shared all the lists with everybody pursuant to the terms that the Commissioners approved back in December on the employee retention bonus, how they were to be paid, who is to get what, that sort of thing, so I think we've provided all that.
You should, that's an updated list, too.
Yes.
Okay, well, and I want to, again, I did it in Finance Committee meeting, but I want to thank you guys for getting all that information to all the council members, not just, you know, John and Shannon, but Jenny and Pam for updating that list, that's, and, help me, Pam.
Ginger.
Oh, Ginger, okay, for updating that list so that everybody could see what was, what was going on. I think that was, that was the issue last meeting, is that information...
Ginger actually come in on the weekend and worked on that, so the HR department's been working really hard, along with our attorney's office, and James and I greatly appreciate, appreciate all the work everyone's done.
Right, and that, there was an initial list sent out, then there was, I believe, two updates to that list, at least two updates to that list to bring it, to bring it up to date, so I appreciate all the effort, and I know the council members do, too, as well, so are there any questions from council?
I have a question of Mr. Hughes. For me personally, I've been sort of incapacitated for, since the January 6th meeting until about three or four days ago. Can I abstain, or can I vote based on the recommendation of a president whom he has shared a bit with me, but I couldn't make the Finance Committee meeting? I don't want to be negative about it, but I really am not fully informed.
That's your choice, but yeah, you have the right to vote, you were in attendance in January 6th meeting, and I think you've received all the information that...
Well, I haven't received it, that's the problem.
I didn't receive any updated lists as well. I've actually got quite a few things I was going to ask some questions about.
I mean, but that would be your personal choice.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have questions?
I do.
Go ahead, yep.
So, and I wasn't part of the Finance Committee meeting either, so there's a lot of things that I wasn't in the loop on, that I've kind of found out a couple of things today. What are the things that...
Before you go, Brian, let me, let me update you. In the, in the Finance meeting...
Sir.
The reason that we've got this, we've got this moved up in the agenda is because there are things in the, in the transfer and financials that would deal to this if we approved it, so if it didn't get approved, then we wouldn't approve those further down in the transfers and financials, but I know the, in the Finance meeting, the, as far as the missed immediate fund, the sheriff and Commissioners worked that out in the Finance Committee, or Finance Committee meeting in there, so, I mean, if you have questions about that, please ask those, but just to give you an update.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I spoke with the sheriff, and he informed me of that, and I appreciate you clarifying that. I also, I had submitted, I just wanted to clarify some things also for the public. I had asked some questions at the January 6th meeting, and, you know, I caught a lot of heat about that as far as holding up, holding up the well-earned bonuses, and I want to make it clear, every question that I asked in here that day on the record, I'd submitted that in a formal request to the email one week prior, and heard nothing back, so I want to make that clear, that if I don't hear anything back, I have to ask it in here on the record. Now, with that being said, since that meeting, I had some more questions, and I submitted those to Mr. Brooks, and he was kind enough to give me a very thorough response. He went through line by line and gave me a very detailed response, given his legal opinion, and I'd say putting my mind at ease on quite a few things, so I wanted to let that be known, that a good majority of those issues, I received response from Mr. Brooks, and I feel like that's been worked out. There was still just a couple that I guess I'd have to agree to disagree on, I, Mr. Hughes' is, I'm sorry, not Mr. Hughes, Mr. Brooks has given me his opinion on it, I'm still just a little bit concerned as far as the variances in the dollar amounts, but with the differences of some of these things, and I don't know, gentlemen, Commissioner, if you guys could help me with this, or maybe Donna could help me with this. I was told today that there is an updated list sent out, and I went through my email, I got one email on the 13th with the council agenda, and that was it, I didn't get anything as far as the list for the bonuses.
Everyone was sent, everyone was sent to Wes.
And we prepared that everyone was sent.
Well, I'd like to see it, because I just pulled it up and showed it, I got one email on the 13th, so...
And then we got, we sent it to everyone.
Well, I don't got it. I didn't get it. I got, I got this right here, this is what I got, so I'll just go through this, and somebody can announce and let me know if this is taken care of. On the different amounts, I know there were some certain amounts, I know the sheriffs had been removed as far, I just noticed, and I'm just going to paraphrase it to make it easier, instead of go itemized, I noticed that certain part-time employees were getting certain dollar amounts, and other part-time employees seemingly of the same position, same length of time of service, are getting less. Specifically, I noticed one who had only been employed for two months was getting $3,000, and the other part-time employees were getting $1,000. I was just curious the basis for how that was determined.
Depends on the date of service. The parameters were adopted by the Commissioners in December 20th, 2021, and that's part of the official record, and Pam is sharing that with everybody, and that's how that was all calculated.
Thank you.
Ryan, some of those are updated on the 13th.
Okay, so if it's by years of service, that would probably lead to be an error then for the hire date, I guess, why one would be 3,000 and one would be 1,000?
I just know some of them were updated on the 13th that we got.
Some of them are, some of them are hire dates, some of them are whether they were full-time or part-time, we made some changes as to whether they were full-time or part-time employees, and so that would also dictate what their amendment was.
Okay, okay, I appreciate you clarifying that. The other one, I remember when we first, and this was the executive session, when we first talked about this, we talked about the full-time employees and rewarding those employees who have sit through the pandemic with us, but I don't recall anything about the seasonal and the part-time. Now, obviously, we've got some part-time employees that have been with us a long time, and they're well-deserving of it as well. Are we still including seasonal workers in this as well?
No, we're not.
That's been, that's been added as well.
Right, that was one of those changes, because I didn't realize that they were seasonal. They were listed originally as part-time, but they're technically, they're seasonal as opposed to part-time.
Those are the employees that I believe the County Highway hires to mow and...
Right, I believe so as well.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I appreciate you taking the time to give me that, thank you.
Ryan, I don't know how your emails bundle up when you get them, but you're on here for the 13th.
Okay.
Yes, you're on here, and then this is the one you responded to. You and Mr. Brooks went back and forth on it, so I don't know how it bundles it, so...
Yeah, I don't know, because I didn't see it.
Because you're here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know, Ryan, sometimes, when I'm looking at it on my phone, I don't know if you were, if that was the case, but when I'm looking at it on my phone, sometimes it's hard to find the latest email in that chain of emails.
Yeah.
For me, too, so I many times have to go back to my computer and...
We'll get, we'll get you the updated list, they're going to get copies right.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council? And really, what we're, what we're here to do today is approve an appropriation from the ARP of 1.6 million that was tabled last month.
Correct.
And then there'll be some adjustments in, in the finance, and I believe both the finance and the transfer that we discussed in Finance Committee, so if there's no more questions, I'll ask for a roll call, please, Steve.
I got one question, I was asking Pam, something's been added onto this employee retention requirements, and they actually adopted that in an open Commissioner meeting, so I don't know if they can just change the list about how they're paying people, I think they're going to have to amend that in a Commissioners' meeting, if something on this form's...
Steve, is it the list you're referring to is the list you just received?
Yeah, the list I just got from Pam.
Yeah, that's, that's not the one that was adopted.
That was an earlier version, there were multiple versions of this floating around.
Okay.
Pam has went to make a copy of the actual version that was adopted and signed by the Commissioners.
Okay.
That doesn't include that one category.
Okay.
Scott, can I ask one more question?
Yep.
So, on some of those newer hire employees, the less than one-year employees, 75 employees less than one year, some of them were like, less than 90 days, I know part of the restriction as far as for some of the employees receiving the bonuses, they have to acknowledge that they're going to continue employment for one year. How does that work for employees that haven't made it through their 90 days yet, that we haven't even made the decision if they're going to remain full-time or not?
Well, those after January 1, 2021, or 20, I think, don't even qualify, let me see the list here. Employed after January 1, 2021, amount of retention bonus is zero.
After January 2021?
2021, amount of zero.
Well, that was, I'm going to have to take, for the updated list, that was one of the things that I had brought up, I had, I had 75 employees at $77,000 between January 2021 and now, so you're saying those are no longer on the table?
Thank you.
Again, I guess I'm going off of a non-updated list, apparently.
Part-time, I just get zero. Employed after January 1, get 1,000, so I'm sorry, it was part-time that I get zero. Employed after January 1, 2021, get $1,000.
Okay, so those ones that are within the 90 days currently, does that, you think that'd be a conflict as far as the one year after?
No, it's our, it's the Commissioners' intention that everybody's going to stay for a long time, and if they, they work out, then they'll qualify for the bonus.
But if, but if the employ, if we made, if their supervisor made that decision for them, they would be off the hook for the, for the retention bonus, they wouldn't be liable to stick around for that one year if it's not their, not their decision.
Nobody's going to force them to stay around for, for one year if they don't, they don't fit.
Sure, but they won't be liable to be held accountable for half of the year.
If they get the $1,000 bonus, they don't stay around a year, then they could be responsible for it, yes.
Okay.
That list, I emailed to all of council on January 7th.
Hey, any other questions from council?
I would just like to thank you for this, this is what I was looking for when we talked back on the 6th, something more specific, thank you very much.
Okay. Hang on just a second, John, there was a question, I think, on, online there that you guys may or may want to address before we vote. Not really, but this came from the Department, this is Department head, yeah.
Because the Commissioners set the parameters, all the council does is appropriate the money. Yeah, he needs to talk to Commissioners, yep.
On that one, they would need to...
Yeah, the Commissioners set the parameters, and so that discussion should be with the Commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, Mr. Brooks, so if they, if someone was terminated within that year, they would still be liable, or they'd be off the hook for the, for the obligation?
Still be liable.
Still be liable.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Ryan, sure, you'd send that out to you.
Yes, he said, he said, yeah, I apparently just didn't see it, thank you for clarifying it.
Hang on, guys, hang on.
The one that was adopted by the Commissioners, actually, that amount was wrong, and so that's what Pam and I were talking about, so we'll have to adjust that, but we've been through it two or three times, I think John has, and we'll go through it again, you know, if the, if the council adopts it to make sure we're correct, then that way we don't have to make a correction ourselves.
Matter of fact, we've got a couple of employees that are leaving within the next week or two, so, I mean, this list is, is not going to be set in stone till it's, till it's all done.
Did you hear what the, what Steve was, was saying, Ryan?
No, sir.
Down there, okay, they're going to, they're going to work with the Commissioners on making sure that these, these amounts are correct, and that was one of the things I asked for at the, at the third meeting, on who's, who's going to be accountable for this part, because like, like I say, we're, our responsibility is to appoint, or approve, or not approve, the 1.6 that we're doing today, and then they need to work out the details and make sure things are correct from here, and that's what Steve had agreed to do on that.
Out of the amendment we got on the 13th, the total, that time, it's going to be 497, that's not approved, the whole million six.
I'd rather have it in case we find a mistake, we don't have to, because they'd go back anyway.
If you, if I hadn't approved the million six, whatever's not spent is just going to stay there.
Right.
I mean, we can't spend anything else, and that would leave them...
I would request to do the 1.6 in case we have some, in a way we have some room to work.
Well, and I think you're also going to see in the, in the transfer and financials on down here, there are some adjustments in that, reductions in that from the ARP, too, that...
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions from council?
I'd just like to thank Commissioner Henry for supporting the tabling of this, until we could get more specific.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for bearing with us.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next up, we've got the 2022 encumbrances.
Donna?
I don't know if I'm up yet or not, but...
The 2022 encumbrances.
Great, I just need your approval. I think you all have the list, and it just takes a motion for council to approve the encumbrances, if you do it in January.
Okay.
Move to approve the 2022 encumbrances.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, on to transfers.
Okay, where are you going to...
On the first...
What's that?
...perfect court, I'm going to read you some corrections that were made by Emily in the Finance Committee. A150, I'm sorry, 150, juvenile probation officer, supervisor's stipend, that is now minus $4,365, forty seven.
Say that again, please.
$4,365, forty seven. A150, negative, plus $4,360. 161 probation officer is now plus, or I'm sorry, minus $51,573, ninety five. A161, then be plus $51,573, ninety five. B140, part-time screening analysis, minus, or analyst, minus $30,573, nineteen. B140, reporter, plus $30,573, nineteen. Seven probation officer, minus $19,000, 673, oh five. A127 probation officer, plus $19,000, 673, oh five, over forty seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Is that right?
Yeah.
Ron, okay, all right. Questions from council?
Before you, before you approve that, remember I had one that I had a question on?
Uh-huh.
So I have, what this all is, is I have two probation officers, one is resigning, retiring, another one is resigning and moving away from us, and so we're moving one person from pre-trial screening analyst up to probation officer, sorry, Emily Anderson Court Administrator, sorry. We're moving one person from pre-trial screening analyst up to probation officer, and then that will open up one position for pre-trial screening analyst and one probation officer position, including a supervisor position. The pre-trial screening analyst, we could move, go ahead and move on tomorrow, if you approve today, but that really doesn't complete the probation officer's vacation days, their vacation days are paid out as of February 6th, so we should really start them on February 7th, however, in the probation line, because that person had so much seniority, once we pay them out, even if we start her tomorrow, there's $28,000 left in that line item, because there's so much seniority there, so I was asking if I, if I leave the request as is now, that would be starting her eight days early, but I know you guys don't like to do that, so I need to get your blessing to go ahead and start her, and if not, I got to, I got to reduce that line item.
And there was no recommendation from Financial, we opted to take this to full council to see what you guys wanted to do.
I'm just trying to be forthright in my request.
I'd like to know how the auditor wishes to handle it.
The Commissioners did it all, we needed to do was Scott, he'd sign it, which I...
No, it has to be approved by the Council for Scott to sign.
The only exclusion of that, I think, is the sheriff can hire, or whatever, they don't need a probation.
It'll be up to the Council, that's my opinion.
What did you say, Steve, I couldn't hear you?
I just hate to keep altering what, I mean, we have rules for certain reason, and the only ones that are exempt from that, I think, is the Sheriff's Department, they can hire, you know, whatever, but it's eight days, if it was 80, it'd be different, but it's a week, I just assume, not really.
Was there no committee reports? So you recommend we leave it as is, is on the table?
As is, and they, they hire when the person's time's up.
Well, if that's the recommendation, I got to reduce the request for pre-trial screening analyst, because that's where, I, I put it in as, uh, starting her tomorrow, so I've got to leave her there longer.
Jeff answered, Chief probation officer, if I can add a little more context to that, the individual that we're going to be filling the spot was on a long-term medical leave at the end of last year, so I was without that individual for the last half of the year, and, you know, we managed to get through, so I'm looking to fill that spot ASAP. The individual that retired had 25 years in, I want to have an entry-level person coming in, so the pay disparity between the two is so, is such that, you know, it would allow, if the Council pleases, to allow us to go ahead and fill that. It is only eight days, but eight days, you know, can make a significant difference in terms of getting our process going and getting our positions filled and trying to conduct business to the department.
Counsel?
I'm, I'm torn, because I get your point, right, but I also understand we have rules for a reason, so I'm a little torn on, I mean, the rule follower, me, follower in me would rather go ahead and hold off, but I get what you're saying.
Do you have a part-time fund in your budget?
Yeah, we have a part-time person in his budget, they're two days a week, it takes all the part-time money.
No, I mean, but that's a, you don't have a...
We, we do, but it's a support staff position, it's not a probation.
Yeah, it's already committed.
Right.
That's, I was just looking for a place to put this person for eight days, that's all.
As of right now, we've got a motion and a second to approve as is. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You know, I think, I don't know why, why are we putting it off if we're going to end up doing it anyway? You, you know, I, I am a rule follower as well, but my thought process is here, no matter what, this is going to happen. If it's eight days early, I don't know that it's necessarily that big of an issue. Um, you know, are we impeding, uh, you know, the process or just progress in general to get things moving within that department by, by not approving this? I guess that would be my question. To me, it just doesn't make sense not to go ahead and just go through with it.
Well, to clarify a little, I guess, in the past, we had various office holders that would have people retiring or have accumulated funds in their line item for seniority or didn't take vacations, et cetera, et cetera. And we kept appropriating funds to fill those gaps, and then the department head or elected official would hire a new person without fulfilling the obligation of the old person. And when budgets were tighter and a new boot, as I'd say, we just had to eliminate some of this overlap. And it was a bunch of money at the time. I mean, it was getting worse, and that's why Ms. Patterson says that it's not good to go back the other way, even though it's a small amount. We have a, I believe, a resolution in books that changed this. So I don't know what, how to solve the problem. I just, that's why I asked the auditor. I don't, I don't have the answer other than that person can't come to work for eight days. Am I correct?
Well, so my, my thing is, we were trying to be, you know, forthright in our, our request. We would like to start the person early. I've got plenty of money. I've done my research. I've done my accounting. I know I've got money. I know the reason why the rule's there, because people are putting people in before they have the money. I get that. That's why we always check. If you don't want to do that, I need to reduce my request for the pre-trial screening analyst so that person can stay in her line item longer to get through the eight days. That's what I need to know, what you want to do. If you don't want to give us the eight days, then that's your decision. I just need to know so I can reduce my request for pre-trial screening analyst, because she will have to stay there longer.
So you're saying it's going to be a wash either way?
Exactly. Because, I mean, I've got 20, I literally have $24,000 sitting in the line item, even if I start her eight days early.
Yeah, I mean, if I add a little more con, you know, this is, the, the margins aren't close. I mean, this is a, the person leaving's a well-worn boot, if you will.
20-plus years.
Ron, yeah, the, the paid disparity is about 25,000 plus. So the entry level person's going to be at base pay. The person going out is, is maxed out, so we, we've got room there.
So it's not a wash then? It's actually going to be more.
It's good, there's going to be more in the budget sitting.
But if you keep that, that retiring employee for eight days and longer, it's going to be more because she's.
It's going to be a thou, about a thousand doll, about, I can tell you how much more it is. About $1,063.
So if we do it early, we save $1,063. That's all I need to hear.
So I do have one more question to Ron's point. If we have a resolution about the hiring process, which we do, we would need to know what that number is to also include it in our final statement at the end of our transfers and amendment, or, yeah. But I don't know what that resolution date number is. You know, I might probably find out, but.
Well, the auditor's recommendation is to.
I just don't think that we ought to change it. I, that's just my opinion. It's not trying to short them for eight days.
Right.
But they, you're going to have the next group come in with the same, got a little extra money, the next group, and it, and lots used to have the resolution if we're just going to keep alder in at every meeting.
Well, if it, it happens to get approved as presented, then I'll need to know what that resolution is for that final statement.
Yeah.
That final motion.
You're probably not going to get it.
Well, this is county general also, this is not, that department has the extra money. That line item has the extra money, but that line item, if there's any left, reverts back to the general fund, not to some spatial fund.
Correct. It's county general.
So that's what the complication is.
There is money in the probation fund as well that's going to be extra, but all the money we're talking about right now is county general money.
County general, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Emily, and you have those, you have those numbers to reduce to?
Yes, I prepared it just in case.
Get reduced to $29,509.78.
Okay, that's what I've got written in my, from Finance Committee meeting in there. That is the number.
That's the number it would have to reduce to if we can't start her.
What council needs to decide is.
What, what are the, what are the IDs? A161?
B140.
Yeah.
C140.
B140.
Okay.
Would get reduced as a plus and minus with $29,509.78.
Can you make that work for, to your?
I mean, we'll just want to start her through the eight days. I, again, I was just trying to be transparent and tell you and just say, hey, can we do this? If we can't, fine.
That's great.
That's all we were doing. I wasn't trying to complicate things.
Somebody want to amend the motion?
We have a motion and a second on the floor, I believe, to approve as is, so if you want to change that, you need to amend that motion.
I'll move to amend the motion.
A motion from Piper to amend the motion?
B140 and C140.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ron, or?
Jane.
Nope, second from Jane. Okay.
37.
So we need to vote on the amendment? Correct bill? Okay.
29,509.78.
Roll call please, Steve.
Can you state what the amendment is very quickly, please?
It's, B140 would now be minus $29,509.78. C140 would then be plus $29,509.78.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we vote on it again?
Now we need to vote on the motion.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. All right.
June 145, or C127 minus $33,684.92. B127 plus $33,684.92. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush. Questions from council?
Just swapping, swapping out employees?
Yes.
Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
American Rescue Plan 317, town of Yorktown, minus $200,323 administrative fees. Plus $200,000 total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from, was that you, Ron?
Yes.
Quaken Bush. This, um, just from Finance Committee, this is a reduction, uh, from the ARP. Or a transfer, I guess, from the ARP.
From Yorktown to include.
To include administrative fees, yeah.
Is that the, the Yorktown project that was in the, the first ARP money that we approved for the commissioners? Is that what that is?
The way I understand that, that was a project that was in, in, kind of earmarked for Yorktown, but, um, the problem was, is they were going to lose other grant funding had they accepted that.
Right.
And it's just moving the money around.
We'll put it back in the fund for administrative fees.
We're, we're putting it in, um, in administrative fees, and that's, uh, I think that's the only request, isn't it, Jenny?
No.
Are you?
No.
For, for administrative fees.
Administrative fees.
Okay, yeah.
That's commissioners' administrative fees, right? Commissioners' budget?
It's four.
John, can you shed any light on that? This is.
Got it. But this is the process you're talking about. Before, any unspent money, we have to transfer it back in, and that's what this is, correct?
It has to stay within that fund, but yeah.
It has to stay within the fund. You, you appropriate out of the ARP according to the state board of account. You appropriate out of ARP for projects that the commissioners approve in their ARP plan. Commissioners amended their plan in, I think, November and December. In November, it was to add administrative expenses, 200,000 now. The Department of Treasury allows a total administration fee of two, 10% of the total appropriation or total amount that's granted to county, which is 2.2 million. So they need $200,000 now to, there's some software that the treasurer and auditor are looking at to help track, track these expenses better and make reporting a lot easier, because there's a report due by the auditor by the 31st. So that's what this software, part of the, part of this purchase is for that software. Any other questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
The adult user fee, 127 probation officers, minus $11,228.42. A127 probation officer plus $11,228.42. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Juvenile probation officer, 127 probation officer minus 1,072.34. A127 plus 1,072.34. 161 probation officer minus 2,083.42. A161.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush. Questions from council?
I'm sure you probably discussed this at Finance, but what, what is?
So this is from, to go with the county general request for my probation officers, because they get paid out of multiple lines, that I have to move multiple lines when I do the transfer, so this just goes with those probation officers.
Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jill Loewes, A108 correctional officer minus $36,492. B108 plus $36,492. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second. From Piper, second from Webb.
Yes.
Any questions from council?
It, just, um, just to clarify on the record for the public, this is for, replace one correctional officer, correct?
Correct.
One correctional officer leaving, hire another one, going to do the transfer, right?
Correct.
Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Sheriff's Office scale, B131 minus $32,84. B131 correctional officer plus $33,684. A160 minus $24,697. B160, B160 plus $24,697.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper.
Go to Ron.
Second from Quaken Bush, thank you. Questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Sheriff 141 deputy minus $40,480. A141 deputy plus $40,480. B109 lieutenant minus $44,888.48. B109 lieutenant plus $44,888.48. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
American Rescue Plan 171 PICA, $114,100. 172 per, $137,600. 317, town of Yorktown, minus $261,700. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush. Questions from council? Again, this was one of those things on the ARP plan that if we didn't approve, um, the tabled, uh, business would come, would have come off the agenda. Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Financial agenda, misdemeanor fund, 310, reported called contractual services. That's been reduced to 75,000. Total request 75,000.
Move to approve.
Motion from Piper. Second from Webb. Questions from council?[1573.32]
Yes, sir. Just for clarification, this is the misdemeanor fund that we're to use to pay the former employees, correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah, well, and I can't remember if I talked about that earlier, but this was discussed in, in finance. And the commissioners had put in for this one. There was another one put in for the sheriff's office that has been reduced. And it, you, that's, that's our next, next one on there. So that was worked out between commissioner and the sheriff's office.
Did they add one, wasn't it seventy-five, some, they find another one, did they add a former employee?
Well, it was, you go ahead and explain that, but I think it was, we thought maybe it would be reduced, but it's, it's, it's at seventy-five.
Okay.
It's at seventy-five, correct? Yeah, and, and we reduced that in, in finance from seventy-six to seventy-five.
Gotcha.
Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Down the misdemeanor fund, that has been adjusted. So the one ninety-six holiday case request is now zero. Seventy-one PICA is now zero. Three one five is now zero. Three seventy-one contracts, five thousand. Three sixty-three equipment is now zero. What will be one? Three sixty-two equipment required. What will be one equipment? So the new total request is five thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. And there's enough in that fund to cover, that was the issue we were having at Finance Committee. Okay.
So after this, after we close the books on this, our role as far as the grievance and the ARP bonus, all that's finished, correct? The retention bonuses and the settlement agreements and all that.
I don't think, I don't think we have a role in the.
Well, as far as the misdemeanor fund appropriated the money.
You want to answer that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Seven violent offender fund, two hundred supplies, six thousand, three hundred phone computer, six hun, or six thousand, total request twelve thousand.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. This is a grant fund. Any questions?
We collect fees.
Okay, alright.
We collect fees to cover all of this.
I was looking down at the next one.
Yeah, yeah, the next one's a grant.
Questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
DUI grant, one oh one, operation full over, fifty thousand, total request fifty thousand.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. This is a grant.
Correct, it's a remembrance, oh, yeah.
Alright. Any questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Three port grant, three ninety-three travel training, seven thousand, one hundred. Three ninety-five incentive and recognition, that has been reduced to four thousand, nine hundred. Three ninety-six drug screen, five thousand, five hundred, for a total request of seventeen thousand, five hundred.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. There were, there wasn't enough money in that.
That's what.
In that fund.
And if you look at your financial.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Okay, that got revised because when I did that originally, they hadn't turned it into me, the amount of money that they're twisting here.
Okay, so that twenty-five hundred is.
Currently got that, and so the bottom line is really seventeen thousand, five hundred.
Okay, that's what was confusing. Thank you.
Do we get a roll call on that?
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Public plan fund, three ten, professional services, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, three twenty-three travel. Three thousand, three thirty-one training, three thousand. Three ninety-one dues and subscriptions, three thousand. Three ninety-three schooling, five thousand. Three ninety-five public meetings, five hundred. Four forty-one computer equipment, five thousand, total request, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb.
Yes.
Yep, thank you. Marty, you want to give us a short version of, of, just for, there's a lot of people in the audience today, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So this, this is a fund that I request for, to be appropriated at the beginning of each year. And we use it to pay for, I guess I would say, special projects. The, the two main projects that I'm currently anticipating include a, an update for the Delaware County ADA plan, which is a federal highway and end dot requirement. And also a project that would create a new infrastructure design manual to be used by, like, the engineer's office, our office, that would set standards for streets, curbs, ADA ramps, sidewalks, and anything else that, that it's felt we need a, a standard set for. So those are the two projects I'm anticipating at the current time, so.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
GIS map, forty-one, four hundred and eighty, three ten, professional services, seventy-five thousand. Three twenty-three travel, five thousand, three thirty-one training, five thousand, five hundred. Three ninety-three schooling, five thousand. Four forty-one computers, GIS equipment, five thousand, total request, one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Any questions on this? You want to just explain what this is for?
Yeah, the GIS fund is used to pay for items such as the Beacon website. And it also is used to pay for the aerial photography updates that are done every other year. We had an update last year. And then other charges related to like, training in GIS, schooling, whatever. So those are the main things that are paid for with this fund.
Questions from council?
I have a question, uh, just a, a reference if anyone's not familiar with it, that our Delaware County website has that Beacon site that she's referring to, and it is extremely helpful with property lines and tax, you know, tax records and things like that. So if you haven't checked it out, it's very helpful.
Yeah, there's all kinds of information on there, although I will caution people when they do use it, the, when you refer to property lines, it is not to be taken the same as a survey. It is not survey-grade data for, in terms of property lines, so.
And I think there's a disclaimer on the.
Yeah, there is, but people usually bypass that, they just click and go right into it.
Thanks for that. Uh, question, we did the questions, council are ready for a roll call.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Unsafe buildings, five, three ten, recording fees, one hundred dollars. Three sixty-four unsafe buildings, forty-five thousand, one hundred. Total request, forty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush.
Yeah.
Any questions about that in Finance Committee? We, we learned that this is a pretty significant increase for this fund, and it's based on, on fees and those, those fees for permits, correct?
Yes, yes. Ten percent of the building permit fees are now deposited into the unsafe building fund so that we'll have money to take care of the unsafe structures and, and be able to do some cleanups out in the county.
Questions from council?
I did want to provide counsel with, and if you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a three-year comparison of permits and fees collected. And you can see that there has been a huge increase since 2019, as people get those. But the, the number of permits in 2019 were four hundred and eighty, and the number of permits last year were eight hundred and fifty-eight. And the revenue, including permits and registrations, registrations were also up. Uh, the total income in 2019 was sixty thousand and change. And in 2021, it was three hundred and forty-two thousand and change. So huge difference, we're very busy, and I'll remind you that again, come budget time.
I'm sure you will. Thank you. Any questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Eighty-one nine one one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seventy-five thousand, total request, seventy-five thousand.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. If you would like to introduce yourself, this is our, our new nine one one director.
Yep, I'm Fred Cummings, this is my third week here, so I told the Finance Committee, you got to give me a little leeway. I'm still trying to understand the process, so. Um, this, this is something that was left out of the budget by a previous administration. Um, it's, it's to provide consulting services for implementing some of the things that came out in the report that was just commissioned by the commissioners. Um, it's also to help with the onboarding of me as the new director, and also the new deputy director who couldn't be here today, unfortunately. So that's what this money is for.
Questions from council? Or wait, did we get a motion yet?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, we did get a motion, okay, alright.
Did he say his name?
Yes.
I didn't get your name.
My name's Fred Cummings.
No questions from council, roll call please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, motion to approve financial transfers into men's salary ordinance with like reductions into men's hiring freeze ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one five.
Motion from Piper.
Second.
Second from Lassiter. Any questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Well, that's what I, is that next?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Oop. Alright, next up, all we're asking for on this one, this is the, the interlocal agreement between the commissioners and the city of Muncie. Is that, is that correct? And they're asking, and the prosecutor.
Prosecutor, right.
Um, and they're asking for a signature from the president of council on this agreement. So I just need a motion.
Motion to approve the agreement.
To approve the agreement.
Move to approve the agreement.
Motion from Piper.
Second.
Second from Webb. And do you want to, do you want to talk about this at all?
Uh, yeah, I can give you.
Eric, okay.
Sure, the Reader's Digest version. This is in a, an inter, interlocal agreement that has been approved and signed by the mayor, the city council, and the county commissioners.
Can you speak up just a little bit? I'm not sure if we're catching you.
I'm losing my voice a little bit.
Oh, that's right, I heard you and the commissioners yesterday.
It's an interlocal agreement that's been approved and signed by the mayor, the city of Muncie, city council, and the Delaware County Commissioners that pertains to staffing of the High Tech Crime Unit. And basically, in a nutshell, what the agreement provides for is that the city will has committed a sergeant from their detective division who has training in forensic software to be assigned to my office full-time in the High Tech Crime Unit. And in return, I am going to pay out of the High Tech Crime Unit budget, which is the money from the state, fifty thousand dollars towards this officer's annual salary. And I anticipate having the same or similar agreement with the sheriff here pretty soon. So we'll have one sworn officer from the city and one person from the sheriff's department.
Any questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too.
I heard you, I heard the other day you authored this, this agreement, and I think, was it okay, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, Bill. Thank you. Alright, we've got committee reports. I don't know if we have any, I don't think we have any committee reports today. Well, Jane, did you want to talk about the, the new committee at all, or? Do you attend it, or?
Yes, it's a, it's a pretty high-level committee. The sheriff was there, the prosecutor was there, judge was there, meridian services, commissioner, somebody from the council. It's together, sheriff, if I'm not saying this right, help me here. It's to gather information on people who have been charged with crimes, and then check and see what the recidivism is, as to whether we're doing things right or we can improve on that. It, is that the basics?
What's the basic, yeah. A lot more information, what, what kind of programs we have to help reduce recidivism, if we can track, track recidivism with difficulties to find, tracked it by race, by gender, by age.
Sheriff, can you, can you step over to the microphone? I'm sorry, we got to get this.
I'm sorry, Tony.
I know you're loud, you're loud enough for us all to hear, but Denise is, Denise will listen later.
So, looking, the state's looking for us to, to track information on recidivism by gender, race, age, frequency of reoffending, what programs we have to reduce that. We give all that information to them, and then hopefully they can give us some funding to offset the cost of those programs, and maybe even give us some funding for more programs. So, yeah, in a nutshell, it's called J-RAC. I don't remember what J-RAC stands for.
See, I didn't either, and I had to ask.
Somewhere in an email, I think it was spelled out, but I tried to get back to it and tell you what it was, and I, I didn't find it. So we'll, we'll get the answer to that one soon, but J-RAC's easier to say anyway, so, alright, thank you.
Thank you for asking me to, to attend that.
Oh, I appreciate you doing it. Uh, appointments, we've got the list of appointments for 2022 that was emailed out to the council members. Jessica and I talked, I went through and called, well, those that didn't call me, I called on appointments, and, and all of, of those that were up were willing to, to serve an additional term. So that's the request, is to reappoint those that were already, already appointed to another term in there. I would need a motion to approve that.
I'll move to approve.
I just had a question, so.
Yep, hang on a minute, we got a motion, let me get a motion in a second.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, we got a motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Go ahead.
So if, if I'm Joe Citizen sitting at home and I want to apply to potentially serve on one of these boards, how would I go about doing it? Is there a submission process? Or do they just contact through email and say, I want to be up for consideration in the future for these particular boards?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the people that were on these boards either emailed or phone called that they wanted to continue. I had, I had no, let me think about that, I don't think I had a single request to be on a board. So like in the, I guess, offseason, we need to be recruiting other people. But we do have some really good appointments on, on these committees right now, so I'm, and sometimes it's easier for somebody that's been on a committee to continue on that committee than, than have somebody, than take them off and have somebody go through the learning process of, of getting on those committees. But yes, and we, we could have made an announcement on that maybe in November or something like that. It just didn't happen. My fault, I'll take the blame for that.
So, if the future, like, it'd be something like towards the end of the year, we would just make a quick announcement? If somebody's interested, this will be coming up in January.
But I think even throughout the year, we can, as we talk to people out in the public and, and things like that, that, you know, if you find somebody that has interest in being on a committee, get, get, get them to submit their name or, or even submit their name. It's easier if they submit it because that way you know they're interested.
Sure.
Than if somebody else submits their name. Because I, I go through that list and, and call everybody that's on the list to make sure. And I was, I guess, just to explain to everybody, I think this council's been hit pretty hard by COVID here in the last month or two, and, and I was kind of down over the holiday season, which would normally be when I would have made those phone calls, but I didn't get them made till first of the year, so.
I appreciate you clarifying that.
Yep.
And something else to consider, too, some of these boards need to be balanced boards. So sometimes we need Republicans, sometimes we need Democrats, sometimes party affiliation doesn't matter at all, so. And I think we have some that actually come open in the summer.
We will have a few that will open up. I'm not sure if they're up this year in July. CCA is one of them, commuter, Convention Center Authority is, is one of those, I don't know, I can't remember any others off the top of my head, but.
They're not always at the beginning of the year.
Are they generally the same length of time? I know they're staggered for years, but.
They're not, uh, some of them are yearly appointments where we have to approve those every year. Some of those are over a period of several years, and, and it's Denise. It's really hard to keep track of, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, traditionally, it's been the president's official duty to accumulate this each year, like Scott said. And so if you know someone that would like to serve on a committee, be sure to let the president know because that's kind of where the final draft comes out and the auditor keeps the record. That's just something you'll learn, but it's a good question to ask because it's usually difficult to find people that want to commit their time unless they have a special interest like animal control or some library board, things like that.
It's a lot of commitment for those boards.
Some meet during the day, some are in the evening.
Yeah, I don't think we had any up this year, but some, some, some have specific requirements. You know, for instance, the Animal Control Board, a veterinary, you know, only a veterinary can serve on that board, but, but yeah, other than that, most of them, anybody can serve on, there aren't any real requirements. The Housing Board, I think, does ask you or require you to take a course on that, to be on that, and, and I think one of the last appointments we made I don't know that he had to, but he ended up flying out to the East Coast somewhere to get, to get trained on that one, so.
Thank you.
So we got a motion and a second to approve the appointments. Roll call, please, Steve. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. Yes. Also sent out liaisons, I don't know that we need an approval from counsel on this. These are just assignments from me to cover a committee. Again, I kept those the, the same, everybody seems to be covering, covering these meetings in there. Bill, we don't need an approval necessarily, but you got a copy of the liaisons. Again, those stayed the same on there. We have no ordinances, no resolutions. Any department heads?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, good morning.
Thanks, sir.
Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. Every January, I give you an update on some things going on at the sheriff's office, so we'll just go page by page. It shouldn't take very long. The first one, I call it the Quaken Bush Clause, it's the pension fund update. Something that Ron has always wanted to stay right on top of, so last year I started giving this update. January 1st of last year, we started the year with eighteen point eight million, ended the year with twenty one point eight million, and that was after all expenditures. Had a great year, thirteen point five four percent on the pension, and then it's got the distributions and also how much all of our fees were on. Everybody that gets a dib out of that, so there's the fees at the bottom of that page. The next page is food costs. I'm required to provide this twice a year, so this is the annual food cost in the Delaware County Jail.
Can I go back to your? What's that? Can you, can you ask them to kind of keep it quiet in the hall? We've got to be able to hear in, up here. Thank you. Thank you. Back to your, back to page one, I'm sorry. There's an amount of money that's, that's kicked into that fund through fees each year, is that on this report?
It is not, because we just submitted that in January of this year, for last year. And that, that, the fees are what our deputies, or what our department collects for serving civil service, so we, we just sent them, I think, and Nancy's not here, I think a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was a hundred thousand? Would that, that was for all of last year? Roughly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that's why I didn't include that, because it was actually sent in January of this year.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
That's okay. The next one is food costs. It's, it's a simple breakdown, we spent almost three hundred thousand dollars this year on food. Salaries were increased, I think substantially, because we had a retirement this year, one of our cooks, and she had been with our county for over twenty years, so the whole time that she was getting paid out her time, we had to put a lot of overtime for filling her spot. We served three hundred and thirty seven thousand, three hundred and thirty eight meals this year in the jail. That's an increase of over sixty six thousand from last year. Total meal cost this year was a dollar fifty one per meal. That was an increase of six cents over last year's meal cost. Next page is, this is just an inmate report from the jail. I'm pretty sure I gave this to you last year. Aside from the months, it has the average number of inmates we have in that first column, so you can see how our inmate population has steadily grown throughout the year. So this is just information. The second and third column, pretrial probation, pretrial home detention. I just want to give another shout out to the probation department for what they do of keeping low level offenders out of jail before they go to trial. All of those numbers that you see in those two columns would otherwise be in jail if it weren't for what probation does for us. So I just want to give them a shout out and kudos for helping us keep our jail numbers lower than they otherwise would be.
Do you have a indication as to why the population increased by fifty percent, I guess?
Well, you know the, the old saying, Ron, if you build it, they will come.
Well, I know that, I've heard that a few times, yeah. I like living across the street and breaks my heart.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a number of, there's a whole bunch of things that factor into that. One of them is, you know, part of the way through the year, last year, we reduced who we were admitting because of COVID. For a while, the jail wasn't accepting misdemeanors and, and nonviolent level sixes felonies. We were asking all police officers to just, what we call long form them, do the report, send it to the prosecutor's office. Those people were still being charged, but on a trespass or, or something that wasn't violent, they didn't, we asked them not to bring them to jail. Once we, once we removed those standards or those restrictions, then our numbers went up. The, the judges greatly cooperated with us through COVID by not sending people to jail and, you know, and unless they just, they were violent or they truly deserved to be there. So now judges have more leniency, and we appreciate their help during COVID also. So it's, it's, it's a combination of factors.
Hey, I'm looking.
I think the biggest one being we have the, the bed space now.
I'm looking on down on the report, I guess past August, I know there's some question marks in there for pretrial and
Right.
pretrial home detention on that. Those numbers seem to be going.
Going down.
Going down, yeah.
Well, inmates go up, the pretrials go down for, I mean, it's ebb and flow. So it's not that they're not doing their job, it's just that, you know, the, the courts may be saying, I want this person held without bond, or I want this hell, person held with a much higher bond. So there are some criteria where they may not be eligible for pretrial probation or pretrial home detention. All, all of that's done through the courts.
Thanks.
Yes. The next one is, this is just information, only training hours. Two years ago, our training budget, the first year I was in office, you increased our training budget from ten thousand to twenty five thousand. The following year, we went back to fifteen thousand. So on a fifteen thousand dollar training budget for forty four people, last year we had over eight thousand two hundred hours of training hours for our deputies. That averages a hundred and seventy, eighty seven hours per person. State statute only requires twenty four, so I want you to know that we are stretching those training dollars to the, to the maximum extent. Our department has eighteen instructors, certified instructors through the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, and those eighteen instructors logged almost twenty three hundred instructor hours last year. So that's just information. And then the last page, I'll give you a moment to digest that. This is how much the jail billed other counties and state last year. Henry County, Madison County, Marion County, Union County, Vermillion County, the Department of Corrections and the parole. The total amount of money received and generated through the Delaware County Jail was four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So in the footsteps of Marty Moody, I too will remind you of this come budget time. All right?
And, and I'll respond, I'm sure you will.
Sure you.
Thank you.
Do you have a
Yeah, we will before we're done.
Comparing the population to the total population sheet and how many are out of county?
Uh, we get, I get that every day on email, I haven't opened it today, but right, I think through the month of January, this whole month, we're averaging about seventy five out of county. That doesn't include the, the DOC and the parole. So the DOC are level six inmates that have been sentenced, that otherwise would have went to prison, but because the DOC's not accepting them, we're holding them in our county, and they're paying us for those. The parole people are people who have been arrested in, basically in surrounding counties on parole violations that are just waiting to go back to prison. So they need, they need jails to house those people. And there again, we're housing for parole, just for a temporary basis, most of them are.
Their total of three fifty eight.
I can't hear you, Ron.
Your out of county number is in the three fifty eight for December. About three fifty eight is not all local detainees.
I don't understand, where's the three fifty eight?
December.
Oh, 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 I got you, I got you. No, so the, the three fifty eight number would be the total number of inmates. So our, our local inmates would be less than three hundred of that number.
That's what.
Yes, I got you.
So our local has not increased.
No, I know, our locals actually.
Well, that's good to know.
I'm pretty pleased with our local number, yeah.
That's good to know.
Have any questions about any of that information?
I just want to say, I know you're going to remind us at budget time, I, I want to remind us right now that that four ninety is actually more than what I projected the revenue would bring in when I made the proposal for the pay matrix. So I appreciate you including that in there.
So I'm pretty sure in budget, of budget time of 2020, before we ever moved into the jail, when I requested from the council, you know, more corrections officers, and you said, we can't, we can't give you that because the money, there's no guarantee that we're going to house out of county inmates. There's no guarantee that we're going to make money with the, with this jail space. So this is, this is proof now, you know, there's no, there's no way to say that, I know, you know, Henry County's building a new jail, we all know that. Their numbers will diminish mid-year probably, so, but they're, you know, we're doing the best we can. So I appreciate that. And Mr. Ballard, I will email this to you when I get back to the office. Thanks, guys.
And hopefully you'll, you'll be able to pick some more up somewhere else when those, when those Henry Counties drop off.
I haven't given up the idea of, of housing federal inmates. I haven't, you know, they pay fifty percent more than state inmates, so it, it, but we're understaffed. We're disunderstaffed, so the investment is well worth the return. The returns are worth the investment, I should say.
Are you getting any response from, from the federal? I know you hadn't for a while.
No, I haven't completed the application. I did, it, it, it was, it was futile for me to go through a three month application, you know, when I know that we're just going to get rejected.
So let me ask you, is that because you know we don't have the staff?
Our inmate to staff ratio, in my opinion, is too high, yeah.
So you, you need more officers before you can even make that application?
It was my argument that we needed more officers when we moved into this new facility before we ever started housing anybody else. Yeah. Yeah. But like I said, the numbers, the numbers prove we're doing the best we can.
Well, I'd, I'd like to chime in here as well, was also stated that that jail was supposed to run with less staff when we had put all this together. I know that was part of this conversation as well, so I don't want to leave that out.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Scott, I want to introduce my intern. This is Marshall Morgan, the Ball State political science major, and he's interning in the auditor's office this semester. So you'll see him here at these meetings and at the commissioners meeting. He was there yesterday at the commissioners meeting.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
All right, I don't, I don't think we have any new business on here, and before we get to public comment, I'm gonna, let's try and take a reset, or let's take a recess, because I don't think we're going to make it through if we don't. Let's make it five minutes, let's try and get back here and get, get back started again as quickly as possible. I'm good. I do, so, but go ahead, you're all right.
[inaudible]
But I just want you guys to be aware that you guys work for us. We don't work for you guys. And I promise you, we'll have people to clean this building out come election time. We're tired of this crap. You've never seen people clean a barn out like the people from Gaston. We'll sweep, we'll even sweep the damn cockroaches out of the basement. We're tired of this. I yield my time.
Okay, I'll say it, I'll say it one more time. If, if things get out of hand, we're gonna, we're gonna shut it down. I want to hear from everybody that we can. I want to hear from everybody on this case, but I'm asking, we're gonna be civil with you guys. I'm asking you to be civil with us. Next is Brent Collins.
Thank you. My name's Brent Collins. I am a farmer in Delaware County. It's my understanding that this area was designated as an ERA. That, I assume, happens with the county council is my understanding. For this Meadow Forge solar project. An ERA. Resolution declaring an area within Delaware County, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area. The real estate is within Delaware County, Indiana. Has become undesirable or, or impossible of normal development and occupancy because of the lack of development, cessation of growth, deterioration of improvements, or character of occupancy, age, obsolescence, substandard buildings, or equipment, or other factors which have impaired values or prevented a normal development of property and use of property. Constituting an economic revitalization area. That's the definition that I have. I the adjoining farmland to this area, I can't speak for the, the farmland that is in the project. To this proposed ERA site is highly productive farmland. That is a fact, and it's currently producing crops. Corn with yields of 260 bushel to the acre, or better. Soybeans, 75 bushel to the acre, or better. These can be proven by the, you know, we report our, we report the yields at the Farm Service Agency every year. There's proof of these yields. It's just, I just ask you to please explain to me why this is designated as an ERA. My question.
Well, and what we're gonna do is, is basically let you guys speak for three minutes, three minutes.
All right, all right.
As those questions come forward, thank you. Thank you. Hopefully those answers will be forthcoming towards the end of the meeting. Jason, oh boy. That's you? Kooch May, all right, I might have gotten close.
And, you know, I guess before I start, I'm an attorney and I represent a group of property owners here in the county. And I know there's been, I think, four people that have offered to yield their time to me. Equalling 15, I'm not gonna use 15 minutes, but I will need a little bit more than three if you would.
We're, we're gonna ask that you keep it, keep it to three. And if you've, if you've spoken at another meeting, I've watched all of those. I don't know if the other council members have, but we've got a lot of people on this list. Here's, here's the list.
I understand, and there's four people on that list that won't speak because they've offered me their minutes, is what I'm saying. And I'm not, and again, I'm not gonna use 15, but I've been granted that by, by other folks in the room who will not speak, but I did sign up.
Can you give me the names so I can?
Yeah, whoever's offered me there.
Hang on, hang on. There we go, okay. Keith Barnes.
Hold on just a second.
I don't have, I don't see Keith Barnes on the list. Oh, there we go, all right.
Eric Pretty.
That's it, yep. What was that? Edward Reed. Is that it? Joe Smith. Hopefully, hopefully enough, go ahead.
I don't anticipate using 15, but I just also, like I said, I anticipated more than three. Appreciate the opportunity to, to address you today. Obviously, I've been asked to speak a little bit about the tax abatement that was approved, I believe, back in October. I know yesterday I obtained copies of the preliminary and the confirmatory resolutions that were approved by the council. And I also received a copy of the Baker Tilly report, and I believe a PowerPoint presentation that they had shown you as part of their presentation. And I, and I looked through those materials last night and frankly raised a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, a lot of red flags, to be honest with you. You know, I know when I was looking through the statement of benefits that was attached to one of the resolutions, it indicates that after construction of this project, two jobs, two jobs will be created. You know, and I, and I ask, and I don't know what was presented that night, how many jobs are gonna be lost as a result of this project? Invenergy is the company behind Meadow Forge here. And I know, for example, they've got a development in Plaski County. It's a little bit larger than, than this proposal. And they had an expert prepare an economic impact analysis of both their project, together with another project that was going in the county as well. That, that expert concluded that the two projects together were gonna result in a loss of more than 50 jobs. So I don't know if they prepared a similar economic impact analysis, if any of that information was presented to you. I know when you approve a tax abatement request, you're required to look at the totality of the benefits. And if this is an instance where you're looking at maybe creating two jobs and losing, I don't know, 10, 20, 30, however it may be, there's, there's going to be an impact. There's going to be a loss of agricultural jobs. I mean, you're, you're kind of changing the local economy here by granting this and other similar projects. The gentleman before me read for you the definition of an ERA. I mean, that definition is set forth by Indiana statute. That tells you what qualifies as an ERA. And you're supposed to make findings in support of your resolutions as to whether or not this project meets that definition. That's, that's step one, before you even get to the numbers or anything else. You know, as the gentleman indicated, you know, the property in this project, this proposed project, is currently being used for farming, you know, for crop production. That's how it's been historically used. It's been developed for that, presumably all the irrigation and everything is in place for that. I mean, and if that's the case, I mean, I think, let's be honest here, ask yourself, how is it undesirable? How is it impossible to, to develop that project normally? And that's what the statute requires. We need to make that finding. I mean, if that property is used, can be used for farming, it could be used for any other agricultural use. I mean, they could put a barn up on that property. You can literally develop that property for any use permitted in a farming district. You know, when, the whole point behind tax abatements, I mean, you, you take property that, you know, again, it's, it's, it's damaged somehow. Nobody wants to develop this property. You think of like a brown field. Nobody wants to touch this. Okay, so we want to encourage people to now develop this property that is otherwise undevelopable, developable. You, this, you, the tax abatement is the carrot to get somebody to do what nobody else will. It's not to remove productive farmland out of, out of production. You know, another, I mean, another part of the definition talks about whether or not there's impaired value. You know, and I, I've not talked to any realtors or appraisers in this county specifically, but in other counties, you know, farmland is at historical high rates. I mean, this is not a situation where you've got property that is at an impaired value. I mean, it just simply, I mean, if, if anyone gives this an honest look, it does not and cannot meet the definition of an ERA. I mean, another issue, and this one I'm still puzzled by, struggling with. Meadow Forge, they have not even filed an application for this project. You know, with any, with, there's no approval for this project yet. And, and I, I don't know how you come in and ask for a tax abatement on a project that not only hasn't been approved, but there's no submission for approval, even detailing what the project is going to be. I mean, there's no plan in front of anybody. I was told this morning that apparently the acreage being used on this project is, is lowering. And that Meadow Forge is still trying to go out and sign up people to be part of this project. I don't know how you can approve, you know, what is basically just a pick and a poke, you know, for, for this tax abatement. It's, it's premature. And again, looking through the materials, you know, that were provided, again, the confirmatory resolution, Exhibit B, states that the council has the right to deny a deduction application based on the material failure of the company to substantially comply with the statement of benefits. You know, it then says that investment by the company of less than 155 million, but more than or equal to 135 million is not considered a failure to substantially comply. I mean, do we even know what the final amount of the investment's gonna be? I mean, that's built right in, right there to the, to the resolution. I mean, do we know what the final number of panels are, the configuration of the panels? Do we even know what country is manufacturing the panels that are gonna be used in this project? You know, I know there's issues, you know, with some of the panels that are manufactured in China. I know there's some solar farms in California that are experiencing some major problems with those. You know, the Baker Tilly report that I reviewed and received late yesterday. I mean, I don't know if you took the time to read it. I mean, their, their cover letter, I mean, just makes so many qualifications. It renders this kind of meaningless. Right there on the cover page, they state, "In preparing this report, assumptions were made regarding certain future events. Some of these assumptions may or may not occur as expected, and the resulting differences could be material." They say, "We have not examined the underlying assumptions, nor have we audited or reviewed the historical data. Consequently, we express no opinion or provide any other form of assurance thereon, nor do we have a responsibility to prepare subsequent reports." They put the numbers on the paper, but they won't even stand behind them. They didn't even audit them or look at those numbers to say if they're accurate. So I don't know how those figures can be relied upon to issue a, a tax abatement. You know, even still, you know, the, the PowerPoint presentation that I was provided, that Baker, you know, Baker Tilly prepared as part of the tax abatement proceeding. They've got a chart here on there. And, and it says, "After the tax year abatement," so after the 10-year property tax abatement. It says that if somebody, if a neighboring non-participating property owner has a home with a value of $115,000, after that 10-year abatement, they're gonna save $74.88 on their property taxes. 10 years from now, that's probably not even a tank of gas. You know, one acre, if you have just ag land, one acre, Baker Tilly, their figures, after the 10-year abatement, they save $2.66 on their real estate taxes. Hey, that's not even a pack of gum today, barely. And then if you've got a home, that $115,000 home, if they're surrounded on two sides, maybe three sides, okay, they're gonna save $74.88, according to Baker Tilly. You know, what about reduction in their property value after they're being surrounded by this? What about the quality of life, having to spend those 10 years, you know, looking at this commercial solar farm? You know, that, that, that needs to be considered. And again, you know, when you're making a decision as to, you know, am I gonna grant a tax abatement? You'll look at the totality of the benefits, and it's just not there. In addition to obviously not meeting the definition of an economic revitalization area. So I know on behalf of my clients, after you hopefully consider what I've had to say today, and what you're about to hear, and what you have heard, they would ask that you rescind the tax abatement that you had approved earlier. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Nicum.
Good morning. My name's Tim Nicum.
Morning.
I think there's gonna be a lot of good comments here, so I thought I'd take a little different tact and ask a question, maybe two. For the record, how many of you, if you would be willing to answer this, how many of you were aware of the informational meeting that took place this past Saturday at Westdale High School that was open to the public? Mr. Webb was aware of it. Any of the rest of you aware of Mrs. Lassiter?
I got the email on Friday.
Okay. Could you answer for us why none of you could attend?
I had prior commitments.
I was under quarantine.
I can't speak for anybody else. I was actually invited by the young lady sitting right there next to Mr. Bilbury, and I committed to attend. And I just dropped the ball, didn't show up. So I overslept and didn't make it after I committed to come. I acknowledge that.
My email was wrong, so I did not receive it till Friday. I had prior commitments and wasn't able to attend.
Well, I can tell you what it looks like to us. It, it looks like perhaps your mind is made up on pushing this forward, or you just don't care. That's what it looks like to us. I hope we're wrong. But man, we're disappointed and we're, and, and quite frankly, we're mad. And if this meeting was any other time, but right now, there'd be hundreds of people here. There wouldn't be dozens of people here. Maybe I'll ask one more question. How many have you read the information packet, I guess you would call it, that was given to the landowners? Asking them, you know, to sign up their land. How many of you have read that information packet that is circulating around? That's the Baker Tilly port is part of it. Have, have any of you read that packet of information? It discusses land values, other aspects of the project. Has, has anybody seen that or read that? I've had a, I've had an opportunity to read that cover to cover. Obtained it from someone who actually did lease their land to Invenergy. Unfortunately, now having terrible second thoughts about it. But in reading that report, it leads me to another question. How many of you are aware where Shisago County is? Do any of you know where Shisago County is? Shisago County is a donut county of Minneapolis-St. Paul.
Your, your three minutes is up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see, that was Tim, Dave Mock.
I'm David Ball from Gaston area. First of all, I want to thank Ryan Webb for reconsidering some of his thoughts on the solar panels. And first, I'm gonna start out, I'm gonna repeat some of that stuff. We as a group would like to know how and why you redeemed this basically non-productive farm ground. We, we'd like to know how and why you did it. Okay, now I'm, here's, now I'm going to, we, a group of us came back December 20 of 21, you're, two, two meetings ago. Tom Richards, he's the first one to speak for us. And as soon as he, that was a county commissioner meeting. Soon as he mentioned anything about solar panels, I believe it was, Mr. King said, "We done okayed that at the last meeting." So Tom said, "Well," he said, "so there's nothing we can do?" He says, "Sorry, we've already okayed it." But what, what I'm getting at, then the commissioners, they was asking each other, they said, they was looking down there and said, "What, we talk, how long we been working on this?" And somebody said, "Well, we've been working on this for two years." So I say, "You, you've been working on it a year and a half, two years, whatever, whatever it's been." Okay, you've been listening to Brad Bookout, Invenergy, for a year and a half, two years. Anybody that opposed it didn't even know a freaking thing what the hell was going on. So what I'm, here's my point, just like Mr. Nicum said, we had that meeting at Westdale. It was very informative. Nobody was there from the county, not the first commissioner, council, zoning committee, nobody. I don't think you give a damn. Mr. Skinner was there, yes. He was the only one that was there. You all know, deep in your hearts, that it was not right for the public not to know about this a long time ago. If you don't know that in your heart, you shouldn't be sitting where you're sitting. Okay, yesterday, I, we came to the county commissioner yesterday, and myself and two other people was waiting on Mr. Invenergy sitting behind me, and his buddy, little buddy that's got ground signed up. And I asked Mr. Invenergy, I said, I said, "Why didn't you guys send your notices out along?" We got notices, we all got notices about 10 days ago. I said, "Why didn't you send your notices out a long time ago on this?" And here's, and you, you can, you can, you can, tell me if I'm telling this wrong. His answer was, he said, "They didn't know exactly where the panels were going to go. Therefore, there was no need in upsetting the whole community, when it will, will just affect part of the community." Am I right? Is that how you said that?
No, I did not say there's no need to.
I'm done, and he, you can go up there and, you can have my last minute. Yes. Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brittany Mock.
My name's Brittany Mock. One, my property is one that's going to be affected by this. Last night, Tom came over. I've met with Tom, I've met with Cole and Scott. I'm not a person that's gonna hide behind stuff. I want to talk to people face to face. To be truthful with you, the meeting went great until the very end, when he opened his laptop up and showed us the map of where the proposal of this is going to be. So one, I would like to know, have any of you guys seen the proposal of where this stuff is going to be?
Yeah, we have maps.
An aerial map with the solar panels around people's houses. You guys have seen that?
I personally have not. I've seen a hodgepodge map of the particular properties.
That are involved, but this is more like a direct of where they're planning on putting them as of now, and there might be some changes made.
I've not seen that.
Okay, exactly. So have any of you?
Haven't seen that. We have seen a, a map, an overall map of the area.
Of the ground that's signed up, but not an aerial view of it. Well, you should ask him to see it because it's something to look at. Because it's more modern, and you can actually kind of visualize what it's gonna look like when you're driving through where we live. Second question, have any of you visited a full, up and running, large-scale solar farm? Raise of hands, please, of who's actually been to one.
I have not, with the exception of driving past the airport.
Okay, show of hands of someone, if you guys would be okay with it, if it was around your property and you were not benefiting from it. Because when I spoke to Cole, I asked him that exact question, and I got the answer of, "I can't answer that." Well, if this is truly about good energy and good solar and bringing new stuff to our county, why wouldn't his answer be yes if he wasn't benefiting from it? And it wasn't wrapped around his property? He can say on Facebook that it is. It's his parents. He doesn't live there. His kids don't live there. His kids don't play in the yard. They don't sit out back and look at their fire pit and have a time to relax and stare at solar panels. That's what I'm going to have to do now if this goes through. Would you guys want to do that every night when you want to go outside and relax and stare at solar panels? An answer? I'm gonna guess most of you wouldn't. So why are you guys doing that to us? You're here for us, not them. You guys are being blinded by all of this money that they're throwing at you. It's ridiculous. Like, just, has anyone even drove out there to see where the properties are? Any of you? No. Right now, it's current open field. When you drive out there and this is done, it's gonna be wall-to-wall solar panels. It's the country. That's why I live there. We have put all of our money into our property that we purchased from Scott Lassiter, who was signed up for this. Had I known that, I would have never bought the property. Now we've redone our house, we bought barns, everything else. And now all of that's being ripped away from us? And it's not 250 from the property line. It's from the dwelling. I don't think most people understand that. So looking at the map last night, literally 50 feet from my property line is going to be a solar fence. But don't forget, guys, they're gonna give us trees, okay? Dual row planted trees. That's my, that's the only selling point that they have in this whole entire thing.
Brittany, you're, you're past the three minutes. We've got several other speakers.
They want to say they want to be good neighbors, but when Tom walked out of my office last night, I was so upset, I was crying. Like, I literally wanted to puke after seeing that map. My husband cannot be there because he's a farmer. We farm pigs. He's farrowing. I text him and said, "Hey, would there be any way that you could come back out here?" My husband does not understand why I'm so upset. I want him to see this map. I couldn't even get a reply back from him. Is that correct? Oh, he's not going to answer. I can show you on my phone. He didn't reply back. So for people who really want to be good neighbors, all you have to offer me is probably two-foot shrubs and a six-foot pine tree, that was one. And other ornamental trees that would never even begin to cover this in the 30 years of the process of it. You guys are smarter than this. You guys have to look at this stuff and quit looking at the dollar signs, because at the end of the day, it's, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. And I'll guarantee you, if you saw the map that I saw last night and where my property's at, not a one of you would be voting for any of this. So you guys need to take that into consideration. What if this was your house? What if my butt was in that seat? Protecting you guys, what would you do? That's what you're there for. So remember that.
Jackie Sheets, is that right? J A C.
Yes, my name is Jackie Sheets.
Oh, there you are, okay, thank you.
I'm gonna start off by playing this sound that is emitted from these things. Jackie, can you speak louder? That's gonna be in your ear all the time. That was from a inverter. That's the sound that they make. I don't want to hear that. And also, there's a fire hazard with these things. Has any of you guys seen one of these on fire? I know I showed one of you, I showed you the fire. And you have that at 100 feet away, at your setback? You need to very, you, you really need to consider making that at 1,320 feet. Okay? I don't want that thing catching on fire and catching my house on fire. At 100 feet, anybody that's within 100 feet, which is where you all have it set at, it, it's gonna cause a lot of problems. And I tried to email it, but I guess it didn't go through to you or something, so I will try to do that again. And also, I want to call out the Lassiter family. Jane, you have a conflict of interest here. You are on this board. And your family has, has leased their farm ground for this. I would ask for your resignation. You don't need to be on this board with this conflict of interest. It just shouldn't be happening. Would you like for me to respond?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Lassiter.
Yes.
I don't have any ground in this prop, in this plan. Excuse me?
How you doing Albany?
I, I, I had ground in Albany, and I have some with my brother-in-law west of Gaston that had belonged to my uncle, but we bought probably 30 years ago. I learned of this the same time you learned of it. I had no knowledge. I have no ground in this property, in this proposal. I don't, I don't know how I could have a conflict of interest. I'm not part of that farming operation in Gaston. Okay, that's a different, that's my nephew. That's a different, that's my nephew. I'm not involved in that at all.
Okay.
So, please, don't. If I had had a conflict of interest, I would have filed something with the clerk. But like I said, I learned of this when they brought the abatement. I voted to, to accept the abatement when I realized what it was. I told this board that I would be abstaining from any vote, not because I have any interest, just because of the looks of it.
Yes, it does look bad.
Yes, I, I understand that.
Well, just, just for the record, Jane did abstain from, from voting on both projects.
The final vote.
On that, on the, on the vote, so.
Because I, I have, I have my personal feelings, and someday, it may close, become close to me. I understand there is another proposal around Scheidler, which is going to be close to me. And at that time, I, I don't know what I'll do, but I, I was reading in my diary the other day. I write in my diary, when they command a plant, I write in my diary, when they command a harvest, my farm will, will stay a farm. My farm will stay a farm. My father always told me, if you take care of the land, it will take care of you. And it, thank you. It has taken care of my family for four generations, so.
Yes, and we want to continue that.
I, I do want to continue that, but I don't have a, I don't have a dog in that fight. And that's why I'm, that's why I am abstaining on everything. I love my family. I love my family over there. That doesn't say that, that I agree with them all the time. I think you had a question?
I'm going to be surrounded by farms.
Hey, hang on, guys, we're getting, we're getting off track here. We need to, there's a lot of speakers to, and I want to hear from, from everybody.
I hope that answered your question.
Yes.
Because it has been weighing heavily on my mind.
Yeah. You know, I've been the councilman for that district for several years now. I have a granddaughter who goes to school at Westell. I, I, I wouldn't want to do anything that, that hurt any of our county.
Well, the best thing that you can do is stop this project. I mean, you guys are in control of this. It's up to you. If you cannot stop this project, do what you can to, you know, like, make the setback further away. You know, 100 feet is not even, that's incomprehensible, 100 feet.
And see, all of those things that you are asking, we don't have control of.
Well, you have to have some kind of control, you're here on this board making these decisions.
This board is, you heard us today for, what, two hours? Doing financials. I mean, basically, that's all we do. We don't, we don't do any of the policymaking of the county. We're strictly a financial. The commissioners, excuse me, can I answer something?
You guys give them the tax abatement?
Hang on, guys, we're not going to get into a, a debate here. We've got, are you, are you finished?
And I, I am too. I hope you believe me. If you believe, if you don't believe me, if there's anything I can do to convince you, I will, but I am, I am not any part of this project. I learned of it when you learned of it.
I'm going to just make, the next speaker is Tom, Tommy Landis, is that right? Tommy Landis, okay.
Tammy.
Tammy, sorry. I didn't have my reading glasses on. Come on, Tammy. While you're moving up there, I just want to make an announcement, too. I know there's been a couple people that have said on the, on the setbacks. I did sit down with Marta Moody after the finance meeting last week, Thursday, and from a dwelling, as it sits right now without any changes, it has to be 250 feet from the dwelling. What, what was originally accepted by the planning commission was 50 foot from the property line. My understanding is what they're reconsidering is, is 100 foot from the property line. Go ahead. I got, I've got to get through these people that have signed up to speak, I'm sorry.
Brittany, you must, she can speak part of my time, ask him.
But you guys don't understand, I have a big yard, so the 200 feet, my, my yard's that big. So then, off my property line, that's only 50 feet.
Right.
Nothing gets 200 or gets 300. That's nothing.
It'd be a thousand feet.
That's nothing.
Well, let me continue with the announcement. The, the other thing that I asked, asked her about, and I think this was announced in the commissioners' meeting last week is, or yesterday, excuse me, was there is a planning commission meeting coming up. Did you guys all get the time and date and all that yesterday from the commissioners' meeting? That's, that's really, I mean, we have nothing, we've had, had nothing on the agenda today, and we really didn't, didn't have to, to hear this today under public comment because it doesn't pertain to what our, what our agenda was. But I know, I know you guys want us to hear from you, and we want to hear from you, so.
I'm going to go at it this from a personal view. My husband's lived in this county his whole life, he has paid property taxes, he has worked in the city of Muncie for 30 years, for 33 years. Two years ago, he retired. We live on 600 West North of Gaston. We're going to be surrounded by solar panels on four sides of our property. You look at our front door, there's solar panels. You look out to the south, there's solar panels. To the west, there's solar panels, and to the north, there's solar panels. We put $7,000 into building a deck on the west side of our house so that we could sit out there in our retirement and watch the sunsets. Well, all we're going to see is solar panels. But the biggest thing that upsets me is, there are eagles that come to our field. There's been five different eagles that have come in the last two months to my field. I've got pictures of them. They fly from the prairie down this way. They go almost a whole mile from the prairie and stop in different fields, but for some reason, they come to my field, I think they like what's in there. I'm not going to see that anymore. They're not going to be able, they're not going to come. Would you want to come and try to dive down into this little area that doesn't have solar panels on it? No. And that's why we moved to the country, so we could see the sun setting, so we could see nature, not solar panels. And my husband took up farming two years ago. We were so excited this year. 270 bushels to the acre on our corn. We were so excited. And now, because of the drain off from the solar panels, because the solar panels behind my house are higher than my field, it drains down, and it's going to ruin our farmland. We're not going to be able to plant corn or beans anymore because of all the rain. I mean, it, it sits there now. There's a big puddle there now, just from all the rain we've had this year. Can you imagine what it's going to be like? And you need to drive over to Modoc and see the solar panels and the wind towers in a three-mile square. It's, it makes your stomach turn. And I'm just asking you, I, I'm personally inviting you to my house. You can come, stand out on my deck and look and see what you think it would look like to have all these solar panels around. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ryan Richards.
My name's Ryan Richards, and our firm's 10, 10-generation farm. I just wanted to say that, in reference to the ground being unproductive, like everybody says, we got quite a few acres that are directly across from where it's going in. We too had 270 bushel corn. Last year, we had 250 bushel corn. Both years, we've had close to 80 bushel beans off of it. Just so you know, the ground is not junk ground. Second of all, I don't see how you can grant tax abatements, stuff like that, to them when, first of all, they're getting money from the federal government to help support these, and second of all, they can afford to give farmers five, 10 times the amount that they would make off of that ground. I don't see any reason why they need a tax abatement to give to them. I don't see it. Just in that alone. There's no reason they should, you should ever give them any type of tax, any, any help besides whatever the company, whatever their net worth is, it doesn't really matter. Better money from the federal government, and then, second of all, money, give outlandish money to farmers just so they can lease their ground for solar panels. Those two factors right there should be right there where there's no need to give them a tax abatement for anything. Like I said, this is going to hurt, it's already hurt our community. I grew up in the house that my great-grandma grew up in. I'm now going to be surrounded, but they're going to be less than, less than a quarter mile down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think it's Tom Schroeder.
Would it be possible to go last to respond?
We have all go in our order.
Why can't he go in order?
Well, I, I think, I think what I'd like to do is get all of the people that are here to speak up first, and then, if you guys. All right, okay. Come on up.
Just wanted to thank the council for having this discussion today, opening this discussion. You know, as you all know, we, we did have our abatement approved in October. That was the sole reason we were talking to you all, not on zoning matters, but on the tax abatement itself. So, we appreciate the, the discussion and, you know, want to be here to answer any questions you all might have for us. I, I do know that, that might take more than three minutes, so happy to, you know, wait to do that at the end. But we can also, you know, address any concerns in the allotted time right now as well.
Personally, what I'd like to do is hear all of the, the people that, that came here to speak. We're getting close to the end of the list, and then, I mean, I think there may be some questions from, from council afterwards.
Yeah, I would definitely like to ask some questions if we can have an opportunity to have them come back up. That'd be great.
I'd be okay with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Let me move on, then. We are to Stephanie Wells.
Good morning, I guess it's the morning. I'm Stephanie Wells with Hoosiers for Renewables. We're a statewide advocacy and education organization, arise today in support of Meadow Forge. You know, typically, what we like to concentrate on is the economic development benefits, and as a county council, you'll understand, but, you know, we have some great examples, broadband in Benton County, schools in Randolph and Warren County, saving of Indiana Beach and White County. But another thing that I want to talk about, based on sort of the tenor of the, the comments today, are why these projects are good in many cases for diversification for farm income. So, you know, as we know, these renewable energy projects bring very high rents to these landowners. You know, we like to say at least two to three times, in Palasguy County recently, it was four and a half times for the combined Mammoth and Moss Creek projects there. Solar farms provide farmers with a sustainable income that is not dependent on weather, it's not dependent on federal trade policies, nor is it dependent on grain prices. Another thing that we don't like to talk about, but it's the reality, 40, between 40 and 45%, depending on who you ask, of our corn crop in Indiana goes towards ethanol production. And so, something that I think a lot of farmers need to consider is, as technology develops and we become more dependent on electric vehicles, which will happen, what happens to that ethanol crop? And so, this isn't the only solution, but sustainable renewable rents are a potential solution. And then, the last thing that I want to talk about is just soil conservation. So, the, I always get the acronym messed up, the Conservation Reserve Program that many, many farmers participate in, is now going to 30-year terms, which, you know, typically mirrors many of these solar project lease terms. And during that time, that's an opportunity for the soil to rest and for the developers to work with the landowners to plant proper vegetation and to let the soil become even, even more prime. And then, at the end of the lease term, if the, the landowners want to till the land again and put it back into production, that's totally within their rights to do, so. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Bilbree.
Very good. Just take a second to ask how ridiculous it is that we're a roomful of adults and we're afraid of our fellow citizens because they might be angry or upset, or they might raise their voice. We threaten to shut down public discussion inside of a public building in front of publicly-elected officials because someone raises his voice. Doesn't harm anybody. It's okay for your constituents to show you displeasure. It's okay for them to be angry and upset when elected officials make up every excuse in the world not to come and listen to a community meeting. And then, when they are allotted the time to come sit before you, the president of the council can't even look at the speakers. Mr. Alexander? The faces that you guys sat here look like you're totally disgusted. I am a horrible individual because I call you guys out. When you sit and listen to James King give a yes or a no, it sounds like he just absolutely is disgusted with the world. You guys seem as though you're tired of sitting in your seats, and we're tired of you sitting in those seats as well. The question today is not a question of solar panels or not solar panels. It's a question of you guys doing the job that you're elected for. And it's not to sit up here like Mr. Alexander said earlier in the meeting and approve things, which you said back when you guys were doing transfers. You're sitting up there to vote yes or no, not to just rubber stamp something, based off of decisions that you guys have made, based off the best intent of the, for the public, and off the will of the people. You don't represent your own interests, you represent the public. And you guys have done a piss-poor job of that. For any of you to sit up there, the commissioners, the council, and for you guys to think that you've done a good job, and for you to be happy and pat yourselves on the back and sleep well at night, I, I think that's absolutely disgusting. You guys really need to take a look at what's going on. And I know we are running really close on, on the time for filing, but I sure as heck hope Delaware County wakes up and some citizens run against the four candidates here to defeat you all. You guys are pathetic. Do better or go home. You guys are pathetic. Do better or go home.
That's the last I've got on the list of people that were signed up to speak. You, oh, I forgot about you because I said, you said you'd go last. Yep. Go ahead, Andrew.
Believe it's still morning. If not, I apologize, but good morning. Andrew Pop, Muncie, Indiana. I think everybody knows me. I'm actually not here to talk about the solar project. I wanted to thank all the hard work that went into sorting out the COVID pay retention bonus thing that has been going on for several months. I appreciate that. I appreciate Mr. Webb and Mr. Ballard. Been in constant communication with them, trying to sort everything out. Sheriff Skinner has been a lifeline and an asset to the community and to me in dealing with this, so I really appreciate it. That, that was what I had to say, and I came in here and listened to this and, and I, it's all triggered one question to me, and I don't know if it's better directed for Mr. Quakenbush or Mr. Hughes, the council attorney. I know Ron has been on the board a long time, as has Ms. Chambers. Is there a process in place currently to rescind a tax abatement? And if so, how would that work? It sounds like that's a question that everybody would like to know. Is there a process to do that?
I think it was done at the, at the Board Warner property.
But do you, it's a known process? You guys know how to do it?
I don't remember exactly how, but I know it was stopped. It was stopped by community input.
Yeah, the basic principle is that the board can repeal or, council can repeal or rescind any prior action.
Okay.
And that generates two questions. One, how would that have to take place? And I'd have to go back and review the, the statute because the tax abatement is a statutory process.
Sure.
I'd have to go back and look at that. And then the second question is, does that have any consequences, any adverse consequences?
Okay.
And I guess the thing that calls to mind, if the county were to issue a building permit.
Sure.
And you went out and bought all the lumber and you hired a contractor and started site work and then county can, can and keeman and said, no, we're going to revoke your permit.
Okay, yeah.
That can generate some legal issues.
All right. I appreciate it.
I have no facts to.
But there is a precedent of some sort. It may need to be researched.
Exactly. So that's, but the, the basic principle is yes, the board has the authority to rescind or repeal any prior action.
Okay, well, I, with that, I'll, with this, I'll yield my time. I would definitely at least look into the process. You guys are aware of it. It sounds like that's some, maybe something that you guys at least need to consider. I have, I'm from Muncie. I have no stake in this, but there's a lot of very concerned people here who do. I, I live in the city and I actually live near the airport, so I can hear that humming. It's not the most pleasant thing, and if I lived out in the country, I probably wouldn't want to hear it either, but that's, that's my two cents is not having a stake in it. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's the end of the speakers for the public here. Thanks for speaking up there. You were on that separate page there that was sitting up at the podium and, yeah, that's all right. We got you, we got you in only because you spoke up. I, I think several council people would like to hear from, from the company, Tom, if you've got some information. I, I've been in discussions with, with Brad Bookout on the phone, that where, where this is at, I mean, it's really up to the company to satisfy, my opinion, to satisfy the, the people out here. And, and can you tell us where you're at? What, I mean, what have you done to this point?
Sure. Thanks, Scott. Yeah, I could touch on that. So we, you know, in, in going through this process, I just kind of wanted to point out with the, the current ordinance as it lays out, we, we had to go through three steps in order to be able to even file our permit. So that was a road use decommissioning economic development agreement. And so that, you know, kind of brought this abatement to the table in the fall. We, in doing some more engineering studies more recently over the past month, now have a better sense of where exactly we're going to be hosting panels or the likely locations of those. So the ERA map is, is prudent for a reason because we didn't know at that time where exactly panels could be located. So it was in the best interest to be slightly conservative on that map. We now know the project is going to be at, you know, roughly 900 acres within the project fences. And so now that we have a better sense of that, we're actively planning an open house event at some point in February to talk through that layout with, with residents that will be in and around the area, provide them more information on that exact layout. We have recently mailed out letters to those folks that we are fairly confident are going to be next to the project with my contact information. I've started to make calls to, to neighbors as well. I still know I have to call more folks. I haven't quite gotten through the full list, but also actively taking one-on-one meetings with folks that want to talk through this as well. So, you know, really now that we have a sense of where these panels are likely going to be, we're actively reaching out to the folks that we know could be next to it and trying to, you know, have those, to open discussions with them as well. And to, to answer that specific question.
You just answered my question to you, Mr. Reddy. On the, you said the notices, you just sent them out last week and I said, why didn't you send them out like three months ago? And you said, well, we didn't know exactly where the panels were going to go. There was no need in getting the whole community riled up when it was just going to affect a few. And that one, you told me and Jerry and Kathy, we all, I don't even remember, it's after the commissioner meeting yesterday morning, you and, and Cole Stevens, Jerry Curley and Kathy and I were talking. I asked you that question. Was that the answer you gave me?
That is not the answer I gave to you.
Hey, hang on, guys. We're not, we're not, like I say, we're not going to get into a discussion. Our, what, I think where we're at with this is, is the, what has, what has been done to this point is there. It's really up to the company at this point to solve any issues that they can with, with the people out there. The commissioners have put a moratorium on the permits on this and that will go through the planning commission. That's really the next, the next step. Since you guys were all in the room, I asked Tom to come back up here and, and explain what he's doing, what he's doing, what he, not he, but what, what the company's doing to help solve some of those issues. I haven't heard of much of any, much of anything other than I've had some discussions and, and have asked the questions. So I was hoping to get that, that answer today and I don't, do you have any more that you want to expand on, on that or not?
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name's Kyle Restedaritz. I, I am an attorney for the law firm of Dens-Bingham-Greenbaum, 10 West Market Street in Indianapolis. Stood in front of many of you with Tom back in, back in September and October. Tom has, has certainly answered President Alexander's comments about current status, but the decisions of the board relative to the economic revitalization area as well as the tax abatement have certainly been called into question by certain members of the public. So we're happy to try to answer any of those questions or give the company's opinion on the, the processes that the council followed, as well as the processes that, that the company followed in connection with those, with that public meeting and then followed by that public hearing. So just wanted to be a resource for those questions to the extent that you might have them, as well as answer, you know, any of the outstanding questions that the board had because of the public comment this morning. So, you know, offer that, offer that up, but don't want to, you know, take too much of your time if, if that's not, if right now is not the right forum for that.
Well, and I think I'd like to have Bill follow up, follow up on those questions. Bill's our, our county council attorney on there to follow up on any questions that have been brought up with regard to that.
I'd like to have Kyle, your contact information and Jason, I'd like to have yours as well after the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from council right now?
Yes. So when we was back here in October, November, I've, we voted on these tax abatements. There may be five, six people in the room. And many of you guys don't know, this was my first, I've just started my second year on the council. So a lot of this is, I'm seeing for the first time. But I asked a few questions. I've been observing these meetings. I've watched the emotion at some of the meetings and the people's lives who, who are truly in, in fear for the life as they know it changing for, for quite a while. But I, I think back to that day, I very, very specifically remember asking, was there any opposition to this project? And I was told no. And being it was the second meeting, nobody was here. I took it for what it was. Now, I'm not going to just point fingers and say that I think that's on the company for, for not notifying enough folks. I think that's on us as the county as well. I don't, I think we, we've got some improvements to do as far as how we notify our public meetings and, and not just do the, the, the legal minimum, the 10-day notice in the paper. I'd like to see a little bit more efforts as far as making an attempt to reach people who might be impacted by things. So that's, that's a conversation for another time, but I, I asked that question. No opposition. I'm a, I'm a supporter of wind and solar. I actually left here that day feeling pretty good about what we did. But after I've, I've learned and I've, I've listened, not only is there opposition, there's hundreds. There's organized opposition with legal representation. And, and I take this young man at his word when he says if this meeting was at seven o'clock at night, we wouldn't be having it in this room because we wouldn't have capacity to do so. So I have a little frustration with asking that question and there, and finding out there's no opposition. Now I've pieced together, made some notes. I've heard of, notices were just sent out recently, 10 days ago or whatever, to affected property owners. For me personally, I guess would, when I asked that question, I would have liked that to have been done. And I don't, and again, I'm learning with the process how things are done. I would think something is important to this, and again, I say this as a supporter, should, should give everybody the opportunity to speak out because as Ms. Jane spoke a minute ago, they're talking about potentially insider. Those folks aren't here today because they don't realize that it might be them tomorrow. So when you have something like this, it shouldn't be worried about upsetting everyone in the community for no reason. Everybody's got a reason to have a, a say in something. And I just think that for the most part, whether it stops or not, this project may go full steam ahead. I don't even know if there's anything can be done at this point, but most of the time people feel like they just want to be heard and have an opportunity to state their piece. And whether they can get in front of it or not, at least they feel like they said what they said. I've spoken with a few of the folks in this room. I don't always recognize them because I know it was on the phone, but I know a lot of folks just want to feel heard. One of the other things, and this is just purely migrants, I blame no one but myself. I didn't realize there was sound. I had no idea. I didn't realize that some of these were higher than corn or 20 feet or whatever the number is. I had no idea. The other thing that I blame no one but myself is I, I'm not a farmer. I'm from the city. So when I hear this many thousand acres or many hundred acres, in my head, I'm just thinking a giant field, one box. That's on me for not looking at the map that Jessica had over her computer. I sit down here. I should have looked at it. I didn't realize it was a hodgepodge of, of properties that completely surround certain people. And I'll be honest, I've said this to several folks and I'm just one person up here out of seven. Had this room been here that day, I would have probably voted differently. Matter of fact, I know it would have, know what I know now. I just think of, we're going forward, we have to give everyone an opportunity to say their piece. And then if the project is going to be a benefit, let the chips fall where they may and it, and you know, if it's a benefit, it'll work itself out. But I feel like that left me to look, looking like egg on my face because we made an approval and I feel like we didn't really have all the information, I guess is the best way to put it. So.
Yeah, council member Webb, those are thoughtful comments. Appreciate you sharing those so that we're, you know, aware of, of your position on the matter right now. I just want to remind the, the, the council at whole as, and, and address some of those, those items. Certainly the solar ordinance of the county was addressed at a public meeting last spring. Invenergy was part of that discussion. The company has been having discussions about this project for over two years. The council, this board considered the preliminary resolution on September 28th. That's a public meeting, publicly notified of, of that meeting, certainly not a public hearing where there's an opportunity to speak, but publicly notified. The final hearing on October 26th, that's of course, includes notification of the existence of the hearing. A 10-day notice in the newspaper that ran, I believe it was September 30th in the Star Press, noticed to all of the taxing units, the, the subgroup of taxing authorities that have taxing jurisdiction over the project area. And, and then of course, that, that was, that was a public hearing for, for public comment. I think you recognized there was a handful of people in the room, but certainly not to the extent here. I also want to, you know, distinguish between notice and, and letters from the company that were sent a few weeks ago. Certainly, there was no obligation on the, the company to, to send those notice letters, but instead they were informative of, of the current status of the project. And so the process that the council went through in September and October was properly noted, noticed. The constituents should have been aware of that by the proper notice. The same protocol that this council has followed relative to any tax abatement that it's been approved. And Mr. Webb, you, you touched on it. I believe Mr. Alexander touched on, upon it as well. The site plan review, setbacks, sound, other zoning designations are not in the purview of this council. Instead, Invenergy has represented Economic Development Director Brad Bookout, we brought forth this application for tax abatement in connection with the project. The council had its findings relative to that application, preliminarily approved the economic revitalization area, then had a public hearing at which the public could have spoken. And then the board had its findings of fact to fully establish the ERA and approve the abatement. All of that was publicly noticed and the board made its, made its decisions.
So you're saying nobody should have a right to have got a letter on it? Is that what you're saying?
Hold on. We can't engage like this, guys. I, I will tell you this, where, where we stand now, the commissioners have, have made some requests to the planning commission. I also made a request to MARTA the other day to put, put notification into this process somewhere where it makes sense.
It was a little bit too late. We did it out of, six, did that six months ago.
Well, the council wasn't involved in, in what was going on with that part of it. The planning commission was.
But when you guys heard the extent that this was going to be countywide, I would think that would call for an automatic referendum. Not some little tiny legal notice in the paper that nobody even gets anymore.
Okay, I'm gonna, you guys have anything else you need to say or other questions?
I just want to, to respond to a statement that, that I, and I think probably a lot of you think this meeting should be a different time of day. I can remember when, oh gosh, you're on. I'm so sorry. I remember when John Brook was a commissioner. We took, and I was the auditor, and we took the commissioners' meetings out to different towns. We went to Gaston, we went to Delville, Giadonna. Do you remember that?
I do.
We went to Albany. We had, we took our recording equipment. Nobody showed up. We were lucky to have five people. And all of the people that you saw in here today that were county employees that were asking for something, they were receiving comp time for that because they had to go and present. I, I know nine o'clock in the morning, it is not the best time, but we have tried other things and it really did not improve the attendance. Yes, we used to have council meetings at night and there would only be the, the county employees that were, and, and that were receiving comp time. Well, that's not, that's not fair to us as, as taxpayers to do that. I, I just have, I have one other question. If this abatement would happen to be rescinded, would this project fail? Does this project depend on the abatement? Where's Brad? I saw Brad.
Council member Lassiter, I'd be happy to address that question in, in a few parts here. First, and happy to also work with Council Hughes on this question, but the, thank you. The statutory provision that allows The statutory provision that allows the council to establish the ERA and approve the tax abatement does outline a process for rescission, denial, or lessening of the abatement. The statutory provision allows that once the project has submitted its annual compliance forms after construction and the rescission, denial, or lessening would be based on not meeting the standards set forth in the SB1, the tax abatement application that this council reviewed in connection with its abatement approval, right? So if the project doesn't meet its investment amount, its job creation, its timeline, the council will evaluate that on an annual basis. This is a 10 year abatement, so it would evaluate it on a 10 year basis and then have the statutory authority to rescind, you know, adjust in some mechanism. And then just to, sorry to interrupt, but then just to answer the question about whether the project will be built, would have been built if the abatement had not been approved. The finances of the project holistically include the project's ability to obtain the abatement. Whether the project can be financed without an abatement is certainly, would certainly still be a financing question if the board had not approved the abatement. That is to say, the project would have attempted to find financing elsewhere to make up for the savings that it would, hopefully will realize in connection with the abatement. This is one piece of that financing of the project holistically.
Well, like I said, the Port Warner project was stopped by folks like you that came to meetings. And I was actually for that project.
Ron, did we rescind that?
I don't remember the process.
I don't either.
Somebody rescinded it long ago.
That was the city.
That was the city.
It was the city.
You're exactly right.
But the point, excuse me a minute here, but the point being that a lot of this that we do here as council members is by statute, Indiana law, not because we formed these, like the county council doesn't send out the notices to all the folks that said they didn't get them until recently, the letters. So that's the prerogative of either following the statute or whoever the applicant is not following it and nothing would happen. But I felt like the council members were criticized a few times here today beyond what is fact. I've been here a long time and I served eight years as a commissioner and it just tears me up to see what's going on across the street because it was groups like yourself that caused us to build the jail we had over there on High Street. And 30 years later, look what's happened. So you just, you know, there's a lot of human emotion here and a lot of thought. And I'll leave the door open for you because I've already announced, I am not signing up to run another term. So my seat is open, but after what I've heard here this morning, I'm hoping I'll get to at least acknowledge you because I come from farm background. My heredity is Blackford County farmers way back and I own a farm in Delaware County, a small one, my family does. They rented. And I was opposed to the windmills because I, the noise and all that, and I went and saw some of the structures being hauled into other counties. These solar collectors, they didn't seem to be any opposition at all when we voted for tax abatement. We were only voting for tax abatement, we weren't voting for collectors or solar or anything. We were, and like Brian said, I didn't know about the sound and who's going to go somewhere and find some collectors and sit and listen to see what the sound is. They looked sort of.
Peaceful.
Well, I understand that part and then because if you're next door, I wouldn't want them next door to my farm either, but I don't live there, so it wouldn't make any difference to me. But somebody out in this community in two places has decided they want to rent their land for this purpose. Not me, but that's, that's all I have to say.
You guys can't speak from out there because we can't pick it up, okay? Yeah. I know. Well, we're open to hearing from you. We want to hear from you.
We do.
Yeah. I'm gonna, real quick, there's a gentleman that had his hand up there. I'm gonna let him say something as long as it's short. But you're gonna have to step up to the microphone.
Thank you, Gus.
Thank you.
And if you, and if you would, well, I know you did, but I'm making an exception. I'm making an exception. If you'd just state your name, please.
Okay, my name is Mike Mock. I met with my daughter-in-law Brittany, my wife, myself, met with Tom last night. And I would just like to challenge Tom, this is a very nice young man, he's doing his job. We all might be pissed off at him, he's doing his job, the job he was told to do. But I would like to challenge him, if he has it with him, you don't have to show the group. I seen, I seen the layout. And I would challenge you to show these people what it's going to look like around all of our property.
Come on, guys, come on, seriously.
It's gonna take a long time, but just walk from there around and show the committee.
Y'all know that there's gonna be changes.
All right, guys, listen, you guys can have a discussion after the meeting, but we're gonna have to shut it down at this point. We've heard from a lot of people, this discussion will continue, but this meeting is gonna have to come to an end. So, no, we will, we will.
We'll get it.
And my son had to deal with her and her kids all night because the kids couldn't figure out why she was upset. You all need to see this because you have no idea what our countryside is going to look like. It's absolutely sick. I walked out on him. I said, when he showed it to me, I said, I've seen enough, I've seen enough. Mad, I'm gonna say something to that young man, that he does not need to hear from me when I'm upset. I went home. You all need to, I'm challenging all of you to look at that deal that he's got and look at yourselves, talk to your families and say, would you like to live right beside that mess? Would you like to live right beside that mess? You, 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 all of you, would you like to live by that mess? It is a mess.
Thank you.
Scott, I know you want, I know you think we've been here long enough, but I believe these people have come out on a cold day, under the parking spot, came through security and sat through our boring financial meeting. And I, I think, I'd rather give them time now than to deal with this. I mean, if anybody else has anything else to say.
Well, I was gonna actually ask before we adjourn if I could say something else as well, so.
Anyway, I just, I hate to see a public meeting shut down when there's maybe somebody else.
You're gonna have to come step up to the mic so we can record it, sorry. Well, you're getting your exercise.
You don't know what old is.
None of you live in the Gaston area. None of you do. I'm telling you, like it or not, the hatred, and I, I don't agree with my neighbors, I don't agree with them all the time, but you have no idea the hatred in the Gaston, it's awful. It's absolutely awful.
And Mike, do you know how, do you know how bad I hate that also?
I'm sure you should, you should.
And I do.
It's awful. I'm telling you, it's absolutely awful because, and when I pass my neighbors on the road, and I do every day, the ones that are in this project, I wave at them and I probably will not quit waving at them.
How many are in the project?
I don't even for sure. I'm, you know who I'm talking about.
I know, I, Mike, I know.
When I pass them, I still wave and I will continue to wave. And I'm gonna tell you what, Jane, if Scott or Jeff, Cole, that's the main farmers it's in.
I know.
If they had a barn burn, if their house burnt, like it or not, mad or not, there ain't a one person in this room that live in that community that wouldn't step up and say, is there anything we can do? But it's growing very thin, very thin, and I hate it, absolutely hate it.
And that's why I don't want, I don't want people in that area to take it out on me because this is my name.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to motion that we ask Mr. Hughes to research and bring to us the proper statutory agreeable documentation to rescind the tax abatement on this project.
Not looking for votes, I'm not looking for votes, I'm out.
He's already out. I'll second Ron's motion.
Got a motion from Quaken Bush, second from Webb. Any discussion from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
You know, I've said I was going to abstain on everything and I will abstain.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
I get conflicted with this group because as a property owner, I can understand a property owner's right to want to do what he wants, but I also completely can see it from the neighbor's point of view and that different perspective. It's a really complicated mess. It's unfortunate and I appreciate every one of you guys coming out here today.
Doesn't do anything but rescind the tax abatement, so don't, don't think.
Yeah, I think we're gonna hear from whoever wants to say something, so go ahead. Step over to the podium.
Just one sentence. A good portion of the world is hungry. And to take good farmland are your grandchildren going to be part of that that is hungry.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
My name is Marcy Bunch. I have lived in the community my entire life and everybody's like talking about the houses and their area that's affected, but nobody talks about the school that's affected. I've went to Westell High School my entire life and the morning drive is my way to contain myself and to keep myself together before going into school. Nobody wants to go to school. But seeing, going to school and seeing the cornfields, watching the corn grow, like that, seeing it planted and watching it sprout up from the top, that is why I live in the country and why I will always live in the country. Seeing all of these changes that could possibly be happening, I don't want to see that going every day. I don't want to see that every day. And I'm just hoping that there will be some changes made because I don't want to see that and everybody here, mainly everybody here, doesn't want to either. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Did I hear that there was going to be a meeting at the school board? Oh. Somebody help me. I was sitting back with Matt Eckertley.
They had the Westell meeting.
Well, no, I think the school board is going to have a forum or something too in February.
Jane, I know there was some information presented at the commissioners' meeting by the school board and I know, or I believe that they have talked, I don't know that there's, I mean, I haven't heard of a meeting that's going to be scheduled. I think they have been, my understanding is what Westell presented was incorrect at the first meeting and they've acknowledged that, that, and they've seen the Baker Tilly money. So I think that's where the school board had indicated that there was a, going to, possibly going to be a loss from the project was incorrect. And I think they've discussed that in some way, shape, or form and understand that that wasn't accurate, so.
And I did not, I did not address why I was not there last Saturday. You know, I had a daughter die last year with brain cancer and her daughter was coming to visit me from out of state on Saturday. And sorry, guys, had to do that.
Well, and I too didn't, didn't address, I was Thursday night, I waited till Thursday to respond to the email because my son was playing in the tournament, basketball tournament on Thursday. They won Thursday night, so their game was Saturday at 9:30 at Selma, the county basketball game. So that's where I was. I did respond to the email letting them know that I wasn't going to be able to make it Saturday to, I think, was it Brittany or? Right, right back there, okay. Yep. But we do want to hear from you. I think that's obvious by today's meeting, you know, we had so many people signed up to speak, we feel like we've got to at least put some limit on it, so. But I think everybody's had an opportunity to say something today. I would encourage you to continue to reach out to us if you feel like you have questions that need answered. I guess so. You're gonna have to step up to the mic, though. You're gonna have to step up to the mic.
You just get an ERA and the application.
We still haven't got an answer on how and why, how and why both, as the ground's been redeemed, basically non-productive farm ground. We haven't heard a reason how it was done and why it was done. So we'd like to have an answer, if anybody has an answer.
Well.
Is Brad here?
Because the statute requires that to be in there. That statement has to be in there, it wouldn't qualify. It's just.
I'll be honest.
Why did they change it?
It's just borderline.
For me personally, as a new councilman, if there's something that I'm not familiar with, that's just farming and things such as what you just mentioned, sir, I'll refer to our experts, which was our Economic Development Director. And I actually asked him during that meeting, is this your professional recommendation? And when he says yes, that's what I based my decision off of. I can't speak for others, but that's what I based my decision off of.
We'll get an answer to that question. I don't know whether you have one or not. Is that what you're up there for?
Happy to answer that question for the council at large or work with Mr. Hughes to answer that question and the answer be disseminated against the council.
That's up to you. If you've got an answer to the question, go ahead and tell us what it is.
Just gonna look at, you know, some prepared comment on that, so forgive me as I read So the, the land area comprising the economic revitalization area includes about 2,500 acres. Some of that land. Some of that land, um, is utilized at least in part as valuable productive farmland. However, neither the statute, Indiana code, nor the administrative code, the Indiana administrative code, explicitly exclude farmland, whether productive, valuable or, or not, from the scope of the defined term economic revitalization area. And further, the code provides, and the administrative code provides that other factors may have impaired the values to contribute to the land area being designated an economic revitalization area beyond whether or not it's used as agricultural productive farmland or not. Certainly one element or other factor contributing to that is the statutory assessment cap, which we talked a little bit and, and Baker Tilly presented on during the preliminary meeting as well as the public hearing, that farmland being capped statutorily at a, at a tax rate of 2% as opposed to commercial, industrial uh, or utility land being capped at a 3%. And so, when you have tax rates that exceed the 2% uh, cap, the county, uh, cannot capture, it's called a circuit breaker loss. Cannot capture that full assessment because of that statutory cap. There are other, other factors, uh, that would meet the definition, uh, of undesirable for, for normal development due to a lack of public and private utilities available or servicing the, the property. Uh, road, necessary road improvements and other upgrades to attract industrial, commercial or residential development. Anecdotally, there are, uh, there have certainly been other jurisdictions, other counties throughout the state in areas of agricultural undeveloped land designating farmland, productive or not, as an economic revitalization area to allow for the development of industrial, commercial, residential or utility projects, which would include wind and, and solar, uh, energy projects. The designation of the land as an economic revitalization area removes certain impediments, allowing for the type of development on this land, such as a solar farm or an industrial facility or residential subdivision. So, the designation, so this land qualifies for designation as an ERA. Once the council, uh, approves that designation of an ERA, real property tax abatement and personal property tax abatement are permitted for property installed within that land area. And so, the project applied for property tax abatement, real and personal, in connection with it, with the council's determination that the ERA, that the land qualifies as an ERA. And so, the project will install, uh, both personal, both utility distributable property, which is designated to, to pay, uh, personal property taxes, as well as vertical real property improvements that would pay real property taxes. And so, this council, in connection with the abatement request, approved a 10-year, even declining abatement schedule on both the personal property taxes attributable to the project's installation as well as the, uh, real property. So.
Who sets the value, uh, the assessed value per acre? Who's, who sets that value? Is it the state? Is it?
So, the, um, there, there's three, if I may use an analogy, there's, there's three buckets of taxes. You have your taxes attributable to the land. Your, your taxes attributable to vertical real property improvements and then personal property. The land will continue to be assessed by the local county assessor.
Who sets that value?
So, the, the county, uh, the county assessor does. There is statutory, uh, law that caps the assessment on an annual basis. That cap, that, that, that ceiling is, is set by the state, uh, by a department of local government finance. We typically refer to it as the DLGF. So, the DLGF will set a cap for land included in a solar project area. But the county assessor will determine as, uh, and in the future, he or she will do for all property within the county, uh, what that land value will, uh, be assessed at on a per acre basis. The assessor will also assess the vertical real property improvements. Best example of that in this project would be an operations and maintenance building. The county assessor would assess those improvements. The other improvements, uh, the solar panels, racking inverters, the variety of the other kind of more solar, uh, project components, those are, uh, submitted by the company, the cost and is, is submitted by the company to the state and the state evaluates that, that assessment and, and certifies that assessment. That assessment is then returned to the county assessor to issue the, uh, the bill, the tax bill. Uh, and then that tax bill is, is then sent to the project.
Actually a utility.
So, the, uh, majority of the property, uh, we estimate about 95% is, uh, assessed, self-assessed by the project owner, certified by the state. And then the project owner pays those taxes to the county. The county then receives those tax dollars and distributes them like the, like they would any other property, property revenue. Not that, that 95% of the investment is assessed and taxed in the same manner as utility, as a, as property that would be owned by a utility.
Donna is a circuit breaker going to, I mean, if I have land now that's assessed at $300 an acre and when we put solar panels on it, it's a thousand dollars an acre. Is a circuit breaker going to? Well, what you're, what, you're just, you're the, you're the expert. Is it a good question?
So. Council member Lassiter. So, a few things. One, uh, I believe the most recent 2022 land assessment was just announced by the DLGF, uh, where on a per acre basis, agricultural farming land is assessed at $1,500 per acre. Last year, I think it was 1290, year before it was about 1280. It's been trending in that, in that direction. We anticipate the land included in this project to at times go upwards of, to, to 8,000. So, as opposed to 1,500 an acre, we're talking about 8,000 an acre, over 400 acres, 500 acres, 800 acres, depending on the, the project layout and the assessment. So, that land assessment is not abatable. Under Indiana statute, you cannot abate those property taxes. So, as you can imagine, an increase from 1,500 to 6,000, 7,000, 8,000 an acre is a significant, non-abatable increase in property taxes receivable by the county that the project owner would have to pay in connection with the installation of its project.
But with the circuit breaker.
Yep. To the extent that the tax rate exceeds 2%, the land that includes the project would be capped at 3%. So, there would not be a circuit breaker loss. Whereas to the extent that the, uh, Washington township tax rate exceeds 2% and it remains farmland, let's just say hypothetically, the tax rate's 2.1%. That 0.1% is capped, is lost as a circuit breaker, circuit breaker loss for the, for the, uh, for the county. The project will pay those three buckets of taxes, land taxes, real property, personal property taxes. Certainly these comments are for the whole council that I'm addressing, council member Lassiter. The property taxes that the project will pay will result in a reduction in property taxes that all other landowners, property owners in the county have to pay. That has, that's a result of Indiana statute and, and budgeting mechanisms that all counties are required to follow. But for, uh, our conservative estimate is, uh, the project might pay upwards of $23 million over the life of the project in property taxes, real, personal or land taxes. That's $23 million of taxes that other property owners in the county won't have to pay over that period of time. So, I think the, uh, some numbers that were, that were presented earlier in this morning's meeting uh, were something like, uh, $17 per acre of reduction in taxes. Just want to frame that in a different light in that that's per acre of land. So, many of the landowners in this room certainly own more than one acre of land. And so, that's certainly $17. And, forgive me, I don't remember the exact number, $17 per acre of land. So, or if that's $30 of a reduced, uh, uh, property taxes for a $150,000 home. Well, if your home's assessed for $250,000, that's going to be, there's going to be greater savings realized. And certainly there are thousands of county residents that in the aggregate, those numbers looked at in a different light are more significant. And part of the Baker Tilly analysis, and I certainly don't work for Baker Tilly, won't represent, part of Baker Tilly analysis was walking this council through the economic benefits that would be realized by the county landowners as a group in the aggregate, um, as a result of the property taxes that this project would pay after construction over the life of the project, 20 to 35 years.
Thank you. Sure, why not?
Are we going, are we going back and forth now?
Time and that was a little fresh, but this is always the worst part of any court proceeding or whatnot when I have to try to read my own scribbles. I know and I'm aware of where I am. Thank you. Um, but anyways, yes, I mean, uh, with council talking about, uh, some of the alleged benefits, again, Baker Tilly report, as I indicated, less than $75 savings, uh, even under Baker Tilly's flawed analysis for 150,000, $115,000 home, less than $2 per acre, uh, for farmland. That's, that's Baker and Tilly's numbers. That's their numbers. I'm not making that up. Um, you know, council had indicated the project was about 2,500 acres, acknowledged, uh, some of that was valuable productive farmland. Um, you know, did they try to parse out, you know, how much they're going to get the abatement on versus not based on, you know, that admission? Uh, obviously no. Uh, there's no evidence, you know, on the, the remaining property as to whether that meets the uh, requirement for an economic revitalization area. You know, he said, hey, the, you know, the farmland, the statute does not specifically exclude farmland. Well, it doesn't specifically exclude any land. It tells you what an ERA is. It's real estate that has become undesirable for or impossible of normal development and occupancy. That is not the property at issue here and there's no evidence that it is. Not only does it have to be undesirable or impossible to develop or occupy, they tell you why. Because of a lack of development, cessation of growth, deterioration of improvements or character of occupancy, age, obsolescence, substandard buildings or equipment or other factors. You know, again, it has to be undesirable for, it has to be impossible to develop. And then it gives you a laundry list of examples of reasons why that might not be the case. None of those reasons exist here and that property, it has been developed. It ha, it is productive. It simply does not and cannot meet the definition of an ERA. You know, and he says, well, you know, other counties have designated farmland as an ERA. Well, it doesn't mean you follow the lead of somebody who made a mistake, you know? And what if, you know, what if somebody in those other counties, well, you know, they didn't know about it or they decided, we're not going to challenge it. You know, we're just going to accept it. Doesn't make it right. You know, there's not a lot of case law, not a lot of litigation and reported decisions regarding tax abatements. Uh, and I did find, and I wasn't expecting that to come up today, but I, there is one case. Um, it was the Indiana Court of Appeals and then they tell us, the statute says what it says. You know, you can't, uh, you cannot ignore that. Uh, and as a practical matter, just last Friday in Polaski County, there were two appeals, uh, filed. You know, one for Moss Creek, which was an Invenergy project, uh, and, and one was Mammoth Solar. Those, those tax abatement approvals, uh, are now the subject of an appeal. And hopefully we will get, you know, the court system to tell us exactly what that means. Thank you.
Council member, uh, or excuse me, Council Hughes asked us to, uh, certainly connect with him after, after the meeting. Happy to do that and continue this conversation. Appreciate the comments of, of Council Kuchmay. Uh, certainly there's a, a difference of, of opinion there. We'll, uh, note that there's a, uh, Indiana case that, uh, notes that the determinations of the council are strictly a matter of purely legis, local legislative discretion. Um, so I'm sure we can work with the, uh, with Council Hughes to provide the company's position on that. I'm sure Council Kuchmay will do that for his clients and we can work through, uh, our comments on that.
Thank you.
And, and we'd be happy to, uh, certainly, certain members of, of the group have asked you to recall this conversation after the meeting and remember the positions of the group. I feel confident that you'll be able to do that. I'm sure we can, uh, share, uh, uh, certain plans that are, are being considered outside the scope of, of this meeting.
When, when you guys, you guys are scheduling, uh, a meeting for out in the area?
Sure.
Oh, okay.
They have so much great stuff to offer, but you can say really.
I'm sure Tom can answer.
Is that something that you can make public that we can get out on the, the website?
Sure, Tom can answer that question for you.
All that? Okay.
So, um, we are in the process of planning that open house event right now. So, we're picking a venue, we're planning it. Um, we're actually talking to engineers to make some final tweaks to that design. Those tweaks have to be made. We have, we want to make sure we're giving ample time to the public to be able to advertise and make sure people will attend that meeting. Um, so all of those things are at play here. Um, we are actively working to firm up a date and location for that open house and we will let everyone here know when that is the case. Um, you know, we can certainly, uh, hope to, you know, just keep you informed of that date right now. Um, but as things stand, it's a very preliminary layout and we're going to be continuing to make tweaks to that currently. Um, especially with certain ordinance provisions that are still under consideration on the third. You know, we have to take, take these things into account. So, this is all kind of a iterative process right now with our current layout. But we do want to get something out in an open house soon and we're actively working towards that. Because we didn't know.
Let me, let me ask you this. Will you have, will you have, um, pictures or, or updated maps for the planning commission to look at when they're considering the setbacks?
We're, we're not filing a permit at that time. Um, so we can, we'll, we'll consider it. We can look into it. We might be able to have something ready.
I think that'd be pretty. Hold on, guys. We've, we've kept it together this long. Let's keep it together throughout the rest of it. What, what I'm trying to ask is, is if he will have that available for the planning commission to view when they're considering setbacks? If you'll let, if you'll let me do that. And, and I all, I saw, I, I think we've established that we want to see a copy of it.
Sure, sure. No, and we'll be, be happy to share that. Um, currently, right now, the, the goal with, with landowners was to set up one-on-one meetings and to go over this. I'm not in a position to be sharing that in a productive manner with this entire group right now. We'd, we'd be, we'd be happy to.
You guys can, um, talk about that afterwards.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, but we, we can certainly work to make these final tweaks and share a copy with you all, um, in earnest. We will definitely make sure of that.
Anybody else have anything to say? You're going to have to walk all the way over to the, to the microphone.
I challenge you to take an afternoon drive. Just take an afternoon, for God's sake, and have a good one. Put your motor on, drive out of No Dog on 36. 300, what about 300?
300.
Take a drive down there because that's what we are going to experience. Just take it, take time out of your day.
They pay for it anyway.
Drive.
I did say.
Just take, I'm challenging you to take a drive and look at it and see what.
Fair enough.
The emails that I sent you guys yesterday, I took a video of it on my way home one day.
I watched those this morning, yeah.
If I, uh, let me say something. I know, I know, I can appreciate everybody wanting to be heard, and I, and I hope we've given you guys the opportunity to feel like you've been heard, and I thank everyone for coming out here. And, and as you can see, this is how things get done. And, um, I've encouraged other people, you gotta get involved in your local government. And one of the couple of things I wrote down here, I want to take some accountability here. We've, we've been, we've kind of had, uh, the company up here being grilled, and they've stood up there, and they've taken everyone's best shots. But there's a couple of things I, I want to point out, and I think, and I'm, I'm only speaking for myself. I think that I like to challenge us as, as a, as a, as a county government to do it better, that might help prevent some of these things in the future. What I've learned through this process, we can't always count on what we're being told as we're getting all of the correct information, or not all, not necessarily the correct information, but all the relevant information. And it's exposed a lot of things that, uh, lead to packed rooms for our meetings, such as this one. And one of the things I mentioned earlier about us going, uh, a little bit more above and beyond as far as notifications, you know, I was paying attention to the city council meetings, and you guys are all in that room or out here, and I see very few of you with packets. We have packets up here that we go off of the meeting, every, every meeting. And I know that the city clerk had created like a QR code where you could scan it, and then they could follow, you could follow along with your phone. I, I would challenge us to, that would be awesome, we had something like that, so people could, uh, follow along. I think it would be wonderful if we could somehow promote the agenda, a couple days in advance notice. I know the agenda changes up to the minute. There would have to be some notification, uh, clarification that it could change up until the minute. And I think we gotta really utilize our social media more. We have a Delaware County, Indiana Facebook group, and this, matter of fact, this meeting's live streaming on it right now. And if you guys aren't aware of it, you could find it on Facebook. I, I would challenge not just this council, but the commissioners, the planning commission, and everyone else, and I just wanted to say it on the record, to utilize the social medias, the Twitter, the Instagram, the Facebook, because I used to read a paper every day, two papers without fail. I read the Muntin paper and the USA Today, and I don't even do that no more, and I did it for 20 years. So a lot of people at that 10-day notice in the legal section just don't get it. So I wanted us to start thinking outside the box a little bit more of figuring out a way to, to reach the people who might actually want to know. Someone made a suggestion to me the other day, they were driving in another county, and forgive me, I can't remember the name of the county, but they've got one of those small digital signs out there on their courthouse square, little, small ground signs, and it just, it flashes the upcoming meetings, maybe what the agenda is, the time, the time and date of the next meeting. So if you're sitting out at the stoplight, and you look over and see it, things like this, out of the box thinking. And, and I honestly, we, we handle the finances, I don't even know who would be in charge of that. But I'd like to start thinking a more productive way to notify the public, so we're not just at the beholder of whatever the company is telling us. So that's all I wanted to say, and I thank everyone for coming here.
I don't necessarily.
Thank you.
So we do have, I do want to say one thing, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily disagree with Councilman Webb. You know, we have the newspaper as an option, that there's code, right, that we have to do it by a certain date in the paper, and that's what the state code states. But, you know, we, we always talk so heavily about social media and how important social media is, but there's still a lot of people in the community who don't take the paper and are not on social media. So I'm not, I mean, it gets, it does get a little tricky, but I, I do agree, we could probably do a little bit better. We do have a few questions that came in on Facebook. Um, I didn't see any emails come through. The first question that we had did come from Mr. Bain, which was addressed when the commissioners were up, talking about the art money. The next question was wanting to know if these retention bonuses were being funded with the art money. And yes, the retention bonuses are. We found out in our last month's meeting that the, uh, federal government changed their regulations on how some of that art money could be utilized, uh, which was really great, because we'd been hoping that that would eventually happen, so that did, and that was all confirmed, which is what we voted on today. So yes, that did come from the American Rescue Plan. I think there were a few other questions, give me just a moment. I know there was a question about the board appointments, wanting to know who those individuals were. Um, I did pull up the list, I just, I can't recall what all the board names were for this particular time.
We'll have to get back with that, I think the, I've got, I've got a copy of the highlighted ones prior to, so.
Okay. And then. A lot of questions and comments today, well, more comments. We talked about the ERA information, so hopefully, we'll get more on that. We did actually have a very in-depth conversation about that. So hopefully, that covered those questions. And if I missed any, um, I apologize. I don't see any other particular questions. It says, can we start the meeting in a new building? Actually, so the, the plan, the plan commission meeting is at the Justice Center, correct? So I don't know if you've been out to the new Justice Center off of Tillotson, but they have a very large auditorium, so everyone will have room to come in and participate in that conversation, because as we've discussed, we're, we're the fiscal body. So the plan commission will be there to listen to all of your concerns about the setbacks and about the plans and any other questions and concerns you have. They'll be there, and that's a huge space, so there'll be plenty of opportunity for everyone who's interested, for or against, to come and speak their piece and share their, their comments there. So you will have a big building for that particular meeting.
And again, that's February the 3rd, and that's a Thursday at 6:00 PM, is what I've got written down. You guys have the same information? Okay, thank you.
Do we live, is that live streamed?
The plan commission?
Sheriff, do you have any, um, instructions on that, on, on how they, how they enter? Thank you.
A big pole building you see out there in front of you.
All right, any, anything else from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Give it to Webb.
Motion, a motion from Webb, second from Piper. Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Wolf.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.